September 13th, 2016, Longmont City Council meeting to order. This is a regular session. Could we please start with the roll call?
Mayor Coombs?
Here.
Councilmember Spagley?
Here.
Christensen?
Here.
Finley?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Peck?
Santos.
Here.
Mayor Coombs, we have a quorum.
Can I stand for a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks. I do like that. I was trying to read. Anyone wishing to speak at first call, public invited to be heard, will need to add his or her name to the list outside the council chambers. Only those on the list will be invited to speak at first call, public invited to be heard. Speakers who do not place their name on the list will have the opportunity to speak during the public hearing items this evening or at the end of the meeting at final call, public invited to be heard. So now we have the August 23rd minutes to approve.
I can't do it.
Okay. Would anybody like to make a motion to approve the August 23rd? Councilmember Moore?
I move we approve the August 8th minutes.
August 23rd.
August 23rd, sorry.
Okay. All right, that's been moved in second. Joan, let's vote.
I wasn't here, but I'm voting, trusting you guys.
Can we vote if we're working?
Technically, we have to, but usually we sit out.
Yeah. Okay, that passes seven to zero. Valerie, are there any agenda revisions?
Mayor Coombs, there was a document delivered to you today via email. It was revised ordinance for item 8B, so that would be ordinance 2016-59, and we will have staff go over what those differences were.
Okay. All right. City manager, is there a report from the city manager?
No report, mayor, council.
Now we have special presentations. We've got a proclamation designating September 13th as Live and Give Longmont Day in Longmont, Colorado. And Eric Henselma, I always blow. Anyway, Eric's here to accept his proclamation, and I'll go ahead and read the proclamation. Proclamation designating September 13th, 2016, as Live and Give Longmont Day in Longmont, Colorado, whereas the tremendous growth in the St. Brain Valley has Longmont poised to become the largest city in Boulder County, and whereas Longmont appreciates the dozens of local nonprofits that support residents with their health, basic needs, and educational needs, as well as those that work to improve the aesthetics of the community and overall quality of life through investments in the arts and the environment, and whereas Longmont recognizes the importance of charitable giving in supporting local nonprofits in their critical work now, as well as for future generations, and whereas Live and Give Longmont Day aims to foster philanthropic giving among individuals and businesses to generate much-needed revenue for existing nonprofits, and also to grow, to ensure funding well into the future. Now therefore, I, Dennis Al Combs, mayor by the virtue of authority vested in me and the city council of the city of Longmont, do hereby proclaim September 13th, 2016, as Live and Give Longmont Day in Longmont, and invite all to embrace charitable giving and support of local nonprofits. So Eric, would you like to come down and say anything?
I just want to thank council and so. Sorry, yeah, sorry about that little button. I just want to thank council and mayor for all of your involvement in the community, and the outpouring of support we receive from the community has been outstanding, and we encourage everybody to get to know their neighbor, do something friendly for their neighbor, get involved in nonprofit, give back to the community, and continue to be this friendly place that we so value and appreciate. I am joined here by members of the Board of Trustees of the Longmont Community Foundation, as well as staff member Virginia Duttkin, and they do an exceptional job of helping me in running the foundation and also being great stewards of the Longmont Community Foundation. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll do a photo with the board. It's not possible. Up here in the front.
In here?
The circle.
The circle trust.
The circle.
No breakdancing.
You're showing your age, you're breakdancing.
Well, you know, can't help that.
How you been?
Sick.
Been sick?
Let's roll. Everybody ready? Hold it up. Let me do one more. There you go.
Okay, one, two, three. Thank you.
All right. I guess Hillary Hall, the Boulder County Clerk, is here to make a short presentation.
Hi there, thank you, Hillary Hall, Boulder County Clerk and recorder. Here for a couple purposes. One is to enroll you all in making sure all of us understand the upcoming election model, as we still get questions about where my polling place is, and we've changed a bit from that, and also just to, again, make sure that those in your audience who also are engaged in the community have this information, as this will be the largest election that will put on in Boulder County's history to date, and we really need to help all those who want to engage in the process have lots of people who can help be ambassadors for us and spread the word and give accurate information. So I'm going to go through that quickly, and hope you all will join me in helping support your community by giving them information of how they can participate on November 8th. So, first up, just reminder that we have changed our model in 2013. For those who already voted by mail, you may not have noticed, because the process has been the same, but now we have reallocated resources where first, every active registered voter will be sent a mail ballot, and then they have the option of how they would like to return that, and they still have the option to vote in person, and so that's a little different from what people are thinking, but we believe that it actually allocates the resources by how people were participating. In 2012, we had 85% of the people return their ballot by mail, so most people are already fully engaged in this model, so it's really for that 15% and all of our new people to make sure they know that. The other big piece is that we have same-day voter registration up to and including Election Day. Previously, we used to have a cutoff at 29 days. A lot of that was because we started our system when it was paper-based, and we didn't have the technology to ensure proper registration. Now we are connected to a live, real-time statewide voter registration database, and so that's really helpful. The other really important piece with that is, if we're going to mail you a ballot, we need to make sure we have your most recent address, so that's another message we'd really love to have you help us spread, is if people are talking about voting, just remind them. Great, then are you sure your address is correct? So really easy ways to do that. Again, no registration up to and including Election Day. Ballots stop being mailed out, however, eight days before, so that's another window for everyone to be aware of. If it's eight days or sooner to the election, to just encourage people to go to a voter service and polling center, and they can go to any center in their community. Here's real quick, the big key dates coming up. Ballots will start going out October 17th, so if you haven't gotten your ballot by the end of the week, you should be contacting us, because that means either something is up with your address, or some other issue, and we're happy to get that solved for you. Voter Service Centers open October 24th. We have one at our clerk's office here in Longmont, and they're spread throughout the county, and then we have even more that will start opening that Monday and Tuesday before the election. So these are just the key dates. The other piece that we really want to encourage people, because we've changed the model, is we have a system called BallotTrack, where you can sign up, and we'll let you know when your ballot has been mailed to you, and we'll let you know when we've received it, and that your signature's been accepted, and you can get a text, an email, or a phone call, so we really encourage people to go online and sign up for that. And again, of course, we'd really love to get your ballot back by November 4th, as this will be our largest election, but you don't have until the 8th, so if you've made up your mind, we'd love to get that ballot back. There's a lot of procrastinators that we have, and with this being the largest election, we anticipate up to 55,000 to 60,000 ballots on Election Day if we don't move that dial, and so that's a lot of ballots to process. So if you've made up your mind, we'd love to have your ballot back. If you haven't, please take all the time you need. Again, just quick, we have 24-hour boxes spread throughout the community that open on the 17th, so you can drop your ballot off at any time. You can also bring it to a voter service and polling center, where you can vote in person. Also, you can mail it back, or use our drive-by drop-off, so really a lot of options for people. This is just a really quick, and this will be posted, so if people want to get more detail, but just to, the point of this slide is really just to remind people there are a lot of checks and balances and steps that we go through. Every signature is verified to ensure that it matches your registration signature, and if it doesn't, there's still a cure process for you, so you're not ruled out at that point, but we just want people to know that. And again, then after that, we also have some new technology we're implementing to help us improve the process, where we have extractors just to help us open envelopes quicker and get the ballots onto the scan room. So those are the big key steps there. I want you guys to read those on your own. If those are, if those of you who are interested, and I always invite you all to come, especially when it's a time period where you're not running for office, to come to one of our open houses. We have one over the lunch hour, little, early afternoon, and then we also have one the night before the election, can see everything live and in person, and I invite all the members listening and here in the audience to come as well. It's really a great opportunity to see all those steps that I went through at a very brief level in person. So again, this is what we're headed towards. We're preparing for over 200,000 people to participate. We are planning for up to 68,000 ballots on Election Day. We're hoping that our messaging will work, and we won't need to actually utilize all those resources, but we have to be prepared. Evidence has shown us that over 60% of people return their ballots after 5:00 PM on Election Day, so we're really hoping people can get that message out and help us move that dial, because it's going to be a bit of time before we finish processing those, so that's our message here. Again, take all the time you need. I think the other piece we're pointing out is that we will stop processing at 2:00 AM, and then come back again at 7:30 AM. We will be processing into Wednesday. That's not unusual. We're just making sure people know that ahead of time, and whether they hear it or not, well, we can't control that part, but we'll make sure we say it out loud. Again, it's going to be a long day, so. Again, you can help, return your ballot early. Some benefits for you, those phone calls and door knocks do stop once you get your ballot back. To us, people track that pretty well, and it also helps, you know, with the resources and the pressure on the system, so I think I've drilled that part in, so. Really encourage everyone, please tell your friends and neighbors about the process, make sure they're all up to date. If you have new neighbors, it's a great way to meet them, and also help sure they're engaged. And then the other plug I'm making is, obviously, return your ballot early, and then the third one is, we still are looking for election workers. We're going to need to hire over 450 workers, and we really need, we do bipartisan teams for so many of those jobs, so we are heavy in our registration on unaffiliateds and Democrats, so we really need Republicans who would be willing to work, and we have short shifts everywhere from three weeks to just a couple days, so if you guys can help us spread that word, and you hear anybody saying like, "Oh, I'd love to help with the election," oftentimes they're pointed to campaigns, we'd love it if you'd point them towards us to help us process those ballots. So again, that's our quick presentation. We really thank you for letting us. We're going to need to hire over four-hundred-and-fifty workers, and we really need, we do bipartisan teams for so many of those jobs, so we are heavy in our registration on unaffiliateds and Democrats, so we really need Republicans who would be willing to work, and we have short shifts everywhere from three weeks to, to just a couple days. So if you guys can help us spread that word, and, and you hear anybody saying like, "Oh, I'd love to help with the election." Oftentimes, they're pointed to campaigns. We'd love it if you'd point them towards us to help us process those ballots. So, again, that's our quick presentation. We really thank you for letting us reach you and your community, and we look forward to partnering with you in the upcoming election.
Captain Evermore?
Thank you, Mayor Alcoms. You mentioned, you know, the ballots, which I really like. How much postage do we need? Remind people that.
Yeah, people may want to drop them off more, because this time it will be sixty-eight cents. Our ballots are going to be huge. They're going to be eleven by seventeen, two sheets, four sides. Just to give you an example, we have twenty candidates for president on the ballot. So, the state has nine issues, the county has four issues, both school districts are on, and of course, we would have been happy to accommodate you, and I would also just like to give you a little thank you for not joining us this year. It's a really long ballot, so, yeah, sixty-eight cents, long answer for that, but.
Wow.
So, anything else? Guys know where to find me. Any questions, please reach out to us. Thanks.
Thank you, Hillary. All right, now it's time for public invited to be heard. John Daugherty, please come down and state your name and address for the record.
My name's John Daugherty, eight thirty-two Baker Street. I'm here, out of love, for a couple of people in my life to discuss or say a few words about the ordinance that you're going to be sculpting over the next couple of weeks, dealing with the regulations regarding home grow operations. I recently read an article in the Times Call that suggested that the direction that the council is going to go in is to create more regulations than the freedoms that we were granted to us in Amendment sixty-four. The words that I have to say are just to encourage you to consider the reality of a few people that I know who would be affected by stiffer regulations, and I know that a lot of people think that sometimes medical marijuana patients are abusing the system, but not all of them are, and these are the considerations that I would like you to have when sculpting this. It seemed in the article that one of the, one of the words that got repeated was the word odor, and I don't know if you guys have received a lot of complaints about odor, and that that's why you think that regulations need to be more strict, but I just want to say very briefly that there are a lot of things that are odorous. Breweries are odorous, and some people don't like the smell. I live right next to the railroad tracks, and the tar of the railroad ties kind of smell can give me a headache sometimes, and traffic. I mean, lots of things can make you feel unpleasant with odor that we have to smell on a daily basis. None of the things I mentioned, however, are ways to help a struggling person get better. I'm going to express, I'm going to share a couple of stories with you. One of my friends, ten years ago, was diagnosed with spinal tumors. He was given one year to live, and he decided not to go the chemotherapy or radiation route, and he uses CBD oil, which contains THC as well. It's ten years later, and he still gets the tumors. They're not going away, but he's still alive, and he struggles, but being able to use the oil helps him every day. Another girlfriend of mine was diagnosed with stage-three lymph, Hodgkin's lymphoma in January. She did do a little bit of chemotherapy treatment, but she still currently uses CBD oil, and she's one-hundred percent cancer-free in these nine months that she's been battling it, and she's going to have to continue using it for years to come. Does this mean my time is done?
Yes.
No?
Yeah, it does when the red light comes on.
It does, okay. Just please.
You can stay till the end of the meeting, and we have another public invited to be heard.
Okay. Just please consider that there are real people that will be affected by this, not just people abusing the system. Thank you.
Brian Johnston?
Hi, Brian Johnston, nine-two-six Kaufman. Council members, the two most basic means of analyzing any public policy are, one, does it do what's intended, and two, what are any unintended consequences? After examining the new ordinance proposed last week in regards to cultivation operations, there is an unintended consequence, at least I hope it's unintended, which no council member raised concern about. And while I personally have no interest in this, I felt ethically obligated to bring this to your attention. Specifically, I'm referring to limiting medicinal marijuana prescription holders to only six plants, the minimum level allowed for anyone under state law. My concerns are twofold. First, this part in the ordinance would insert the city into the physician-patient relationship, putting the city into a rather unprecedented position of potentially creating a barrier to physician-ordered health care. I welcome any examples of this being done before, because I have found none. So please, members of the council, understand that this ordinance could, at some level, act as a barrier to health care. Regardless of the good intentions of this ordinance, this is not a role for city government. It puts Longmont in a precarious position. Should there be two such people in one house, how will the city decide who gets to keep their voter-affirmed rights and who loses it? Who loses their health care option? That's a bad and potentially costly position to put the city in. In bringing this up with during the break last week was one of the members of the committee that designed the ordinance. She countered that there is no such barrier, because they could simply go and buy it at the dispensary. Well, that response, aside from astounding me, brought me to realize my second point. This ordinance will surely increase health care costs for some of our most vulnerable citizens. So council members, please understand that by supporting these limitations, you will be adding to the financial challenges already faced as a result of their EMS, or them undergoing chemotherapy. And that's just a, just a couple of very real-life examples. I ask that you look deep within your heart, and that you ask yourself, is knowingly adding to the financial burden that ill people face, something that I'd want on my conscience? I know I wouldn't. Therefore, based upon the unintended consequences of creating a barrier to physician-ordered health care, and the unethical financial burden it would impose on some with very legitimate needs, I ask that the council not support a six-plant limit for medicinal users, and don't force them to the state minimum level for everyone. Doing so, if I were to describe it with one word, is inhumane. Please do the humane thing, and don't make it harder for these people. Please also consider adding someone to represent these patients to the committee developing these ordinances. They obviously have no representation on it now, and, and these people deserve it. Thank you for your time.
Jerry, no, you know, we don't applause, or, because the people with opposing, a...
Go ahead and explain why you don't applause.
Yeah. The reason why we don't applause is because then other people that have different views will feel uncomfortable coming and sharing their view if they're...
Thank you. I guess the, sticking up for the mayor here, the, the other reason is that there might be people here, and I've seen the mayor do this, I don't know how many people have been here at the council before, but let's suppose that there's a right-wing conservative Christian element in the room that want us to vote for, you know, getting rid of pot, we want to, we want the six, six-plant limit, and we allow them to clap. Then you clap, we all clap. And unfortunately, in this particular setting, we're trying to figure out and proceed with what we're going to do, and if we make noise, and if we have outbursts, what happens is, then we get riled up, we don't get around to actually dealing with the issue. And I'm pretty sure that we want to hear what you have to say without the, without the gestures, the noise, et cetera. Thank you.
So Jerry Shepard?
Good evening, Jerry Shepard. Business address, seven-ten Eleventh Avenue, Suite 203D in Greeley. I'm an attorney, I practice mainly in criminal and traffic. Thank you all for the opportunity to address you briefly. You all probably know this, but it can't hurt to reinforce it. The state of Colorado's constitution has a specific right to privacy, meaning that is within our constitution. One of the concerns that I and many others see with this particular ordinance is that people are being forced to choose between their state constitutional rights to have cannabis, whether for medical or other purposes, or to uphold their rights against unreasonable searches and seizures. And just to clarify one part of the law, if there's an exigent circumstance, there is no warrant requirement. We should not be forcing people to give up their constitutional rights in the guise of regulation. I, I've also heard that there is a concern, I'm shifting a little bit here, there's a concern about plant limits, as Brian talked about, and there's also a lawsuit pending in Colorado Springs. In the interest of economy, of time, and saving taxpayers' monies on litigation costs, it might be helpful to see how some of these other lawsuits play out, to see if some of the proposals are even constitutional. I would be very troubled if there was any entity, whether it's this city or another city, were saying that, no, you, we have the right to search under an administrative search thing, and with all due respect, I have a copy of the constitution in my car, and I don't see an administrative exception under the Fourth Amendment to the US Constitution, nor do I see one for Article Two, Section Seven of the Colorado Constitution. There are also some concerns about, if there are problems to be addressed, the analogy of using a cannon when a fly swatter would suffice, might be appropriate analogy. Are there documented concerns, and have people actually stepped forward, or is this, with all due respect, a solution looking for a problem? If there's a concern about empty houses with commercial grows, there could be a narrowly-divine zoning ordinance to solve that problem, instead of creating other problems and imposing on the people who actually need this medicine. I also echo Brian's concerns about the cost prohibitive of accessing medicine for many people unless they are able to grow. There are a lot of other concerns that other citizens and members of the community will address as well. I think I'm about to run out of time, but there are also some concerns, there are some, I actually had a misconception about, to the extent outdoor grows were allowed, it's not prohibited to grow outside, it just has to be locked down. That can be done analogous to a dog run, and still locked up, and law enforcement actually, that works better for them, because they can access it without going into the home, they can be kept away from children better, and so there are ways to take care of some of the problems without imposing on patients and unconstitutional guarantees. I do appreciate, thank you very much for your time, and have a good rest of the night.
Thank you. Beau Schaefer?
Good evening, councilmen, councilwomen, audience, guests. My name is Beau Schaefer, I live at seventy-four, twenty-five East County Line Road. While my current concern is for the ordinance under discussion, I feel it only reflects a much larger problem in Longmont and elsewhere. That problem is the government trying to run not just my life, but everyone's life. Everywhere we turn, the government's just trying to keep us safe, from things like offensive words, like marijuana and patients' rights, things like offensive smells, again, like marijuana, maybe soon it'll be offensive thoughts, if the trend continues, it's only the natural trend, but even in Longmont, there's an ordinance prohibiting anyone from having a car with a flat tire parked anywhere on your own property. Not about derelict cars, but specifically about a flat tire on your own private property. And now I have another example of how the council is perfectly willing to force people, both patients and recreationists, to submit to a complete abrogation of not only their US constitutional rights, but their Colorado constitutional rights, too. A majority of knowledgeable people voted for cannabis in this state. You'd do them a disservice by supporting the losing side so vehemently. Councilman Baglo and Combs, you like to hear us, but not whether the community supports us. No wonder it's so hard for council to know what citizens want. Councilman Santos, did you receive my question in the email? No, I'm the constitution. Okay, I was asking, Councilman Santos, which part of the constitution he supports? The part he thinks is there, and is not, or the part that is there, and he's not aware of? And so I would hesitate to you, the speaker before me said she had her copy in the car. I carry my copy here all the time with me. I would suggest that perhaps council might invest in a set of these for everybody to look at and see, and read this. Statistics say about twenty-eight percent of people in the country have ever read this. So that would say like, maybe three-quarters of you have it, but then again, you're elected officials, maybe you're more involved than you, than some of us think you are, and maybe you have. But again, I'd recommend that if you can't answer questions about the constitution, or you make statements about it that aren't true, perhaps you should read it and then talk better about it. Thank you very much.
Harrison Palmer?
Hello, my name is Harrison Palmer. I live at four-thirty-eight North Parkside Drive here in Longmont. I'm an attorney licensed in Georgia, currently residing in this city, and I'd like to speak to you about the constitutional issues and infringements that would be affected by the proposed legislation in regards to medical marijuana here. The most concerning part of this legislation to me is proposed legislation, Section C, right of entry for inspection purposes. Now, this section would allow for the government to come into any medical marijuana grower patient's home without a warrant, where the patient is doing nothing more than exercising their rights, as guaranteed by the constitution of the state of Colorado. Now subsection T allows for the issuance of a warrant upon refusal. I want to know how does one determine probable cause to enter a residence on the mere suspicion that a person is exercising their constitutional rights? Subsection T attempts to further derogate the warrant requirement in the case of an emergency involving imminent danger of public health, safety, or welfare. Now, how can a plant pose an imminent danger? That's what I'd like to know, the key word being imminent there. Now, I've worked as an attorney for several years, and I'm professionally trained to deal with government regulators, and I'll tell you, it's, it's no easy task, and to ask these law people here to stand up for their rights when being bullied by overreaching government action is neither tenable nor appropriate in a democracy. Now, the Fourth Amendment to the constitution is very clear, the right of the people to be secure in their persons, houses, papers, and effects against unreasonable searches and seizures shall not be violated, and no warrants shall issue but upon probable cause. It's what I have to reaffirmation, in particular, describing the place to be searched and the persons or things to be seized. Now, by binding a law with the warrant requirement to enter private citizens' residence is to completely circumvent and ignore the protections of the Fourth Amendment. This is not North Korea, this is not Soviet Russia, nor is this Nazi Germany. This is the United States of America, and thanks to the rights bestowed upon us by our forefathers, many have come paid for those rights in blood. We Americans have no explanation to the government for refusing to allow them into our homes without any sort of probable cause. Now, I urge you council members to defend the constitutions of the US and Colorado, and I'll leave you with the words of Justice John Marshall. A legislative act contrary to the constitution is not law. Thank you.
Kim Gibbs?
Good evening, Kim Gibbs, seven-four-six-eight Mount Sherman Road in Gunbarrel. I'd like to comment on the Labor Day holiday weekend and the noise nuisance created by Mile High skydiving, and I want to be clear that I'm talking about one tenant at your airport, not the overall airport today. I was actually out of town for part of that weekend, and returned home on Sunday. Got out, and it was a beautiful time away, quiet, got out of my car, looked up at the sky at, and it appeared to be a giant flying pufferfish, just slightly to the north of my home. I didn't recognize it as one of the jump planes, but I knew it was a jump plane, plane because of the size and the steep angle that it was climbing. As it turns out, Mile High was operating three aircraft that weekend, the twenty-three-passenger Purple Twin Otter, the fifteen-passenger King Air, and a visiting seventeen-passenger Sky Van, all day long, all weekend long, early in the morning until late at night. I'll leave you with a picture, a few pictures. Here's one with all three of them in the air, and oftentimes, when they're climbing like that, you can hear one over here, and one climbing over here. When there's three, it's really awful. Here's one at nine-twenty at night, I think this was Saturday night. Sometimes they like to take off tandem, so their two planes, like, right together, climbing, climbing at full power for the whole duration of the flight. And then if you call and complain, you can be sure they'll buzz your house. And I'll leave you a few of these screenshots from June fifth, which is the most recent You have a problem, tenant, at your airport. We've been asking you for many years to do something about it. Our request... Our requests have been reasonable, and if you need a reminder, they are outlined on our website, citizensforquietskies.org. Now I live in the county. Some have suggested that residents of unincorporated Boulder County shouldn't be heard or considered by the Longmont City Council. I want to share with you some reasons why I disagree with that. There are tens of thousands of county residents who support Longmont and Longmont businesses. We support Longmont schools. My child goes to Sunset Middle School. And we chose that school because of the curriculum and the diversity which we value, and we are delighted with Sunset Middle School. We support youth sports. Just last weekend, I was at the Westview Middle School playing fields, just north of the airport on Airport Road, and it was quiet. I'll finish up later, thank you.
Thank you. Paul Tiger?
Paul Tiger, 634 Main Street. So I've written to you and had some discussion with the staff, and actually called Michelle Goldman, our city fire marshal, and talked to folks in the planning department. I had done that back in May, when I first got wind of the ordinance that might come up, and I pointed out that the alcohol extractions, or extracting marijuana oil, cannabis oil, was actually exempted, alcohol is exempted. Councilman Moore talked about this at the last meeting. And so it looks like you might actually just ban them all together. It's an interesting thing, is that there's a device that's manufactured in this town that is used to extract essential oils from all kinds of material, organic material. And I think that the council would like to ban it from extracting marijuana oil, but I could use the mint plants in my backyard, I grew mint julep, thanks to the flower bin this year, and I'd like to maybe extract that. So why can't I extract that and not extract marijuana? That's kind of an interesting quandary. Our Mike Foot, who is my representation at the State House, I know that our town is divided, and Jonathan Singer, who's also written a number of bills which have passed, addressing the number of plants that a person may have, far exceeds what you have in mind for the six plants. Actually, medical use, according to Jonathan, says that there is a law that's actually going to come into effect that allows 99 plants. My thing is, is that there are these laws around there, and the team that went to go and look, they went and looked at what other cities had done, but they didn't actually look at 18-18-406.6, they didn't actually look at the law. Denver passed an ordinance that is, they passed it before this law passed. I understand that you can be more stringent than the law, and I think that that's going to cause some trouble for you. I ask that you not do that. I ask you actually look at the law that has passed, and rather than go with what Denver has done. This is Longmont, this isn't Denver, this isn't Broomfield, this is Longmont. Thank you.
Al Manley?
Al Manley, 940 Greenview Lane, 80501. Members, mayor of the council, I'm here tonight to represent the members of Vance brand hangar owners and airport users who are deeply concerned about the lack of any positive activity in regards to our airport. We would like to present for your reading, which I'll hand out, leave with you, an article that was written about a nearby airport in Greeley. It tells of how strong the airport is, and the fact that it is flourishing. They have an excellent FBO building, and now they are expanding it to serve the aviation community even better. In comparison, the facilities of Vance brand Airport rate of four on a scale of 1 to 10, and we are a city with a population very similar to Greeley. What we'd like everyone to keep in mind is that the airport is the front door to the city when it comes to business aviation. In regards to business aviation, we are seeing a substantial increase in business in corporate airplanes, jets, turboprops coming to the airport. These aircraft are bringing both new and continued businesses to Longmont. Airplanes of this type are seen daily at KLMO, the airport identifier. The cost to operate these aircraft runs into the thousands of dollars per hour, so one might surmise that the people arriving in these airplanes are here to do serious business and not just stopping in for lunch. It seems as if the city is not willing to spend more than the absolute minimum in maintaining the airport. Our FBO substandard is in serious need of upgrading or replacement, and more mundane things like the landscaping of the entrance sign needs a complete overhaul. If you think that business people do not notice these things, you are mistaken. Everything at the airport reflects on the character of the city. As suggested at the last Airport Advisory Board meeting by Jeff, the officers of our association and airport board members would gladly fly, they offered to actually fly to Greeley, or wherever you choose to go locally, or drive you to Greeley on a tour and lunch, if you'd like to see what is possible. Sidney, Nebraska is another great example of what can be done by smaller cities when it comes to updating their airport. You might be surprised if the help that you could garner from the hangar owners and airport users, if you could replace the current airport perception with a positive attitude. We feel that when it comes to the airport, it is essential for Longmont to put its best foot forward in order to ensure that our visitors are properly impressed with our fine city. Thank you.
Ashley Weber?
Okay, my name is Ashley Weber. I live on Feather Reed Avenue, and I am here tonight to address the new language that Longmont is proposing in regards to the cannabis home grows as well. This concerns me as a medical patient using this plant for different medical ailments I suffer from in my condition. But there are many other patients that this is going to affect, and I don't think that this was taken into consideration when the proposal was written. The committee that you guys have writing the proposal, I believe, didn't engage with anybody in the medical field, or anybody who needs to use this medically, and I think that it might be a good idea for you to have your committee, perhaps, have somebody on there who would represent a patient. As it was presented earlier, Colorado Springs is going through a pending lawsuit because they did put a 12-plant count limit, and I just think that it, too, would be a waste of Longmont's money to pursue something when we know there are lawyers waiting on the other side, to, that are against this as well. And we know that the medical use of marijuana passed 53 percent, and, and I just, that's a medical use, and I feel that we might be getting medical and recreational confused. I know that Mayor Coombs said that he benefited from a patch that he had put on his leg going bicycle riding, and I believe that there are, there are many things that people do benefit from, but don't take into consideration when putting this through. I think Councilmember Christiansen for addressing the smell ordinance and the entrance during reasonable hours when it was discussed. You said, "I think it is treating people with medical conditions or growing for their own use, assuming they're criminals. It would be more respectful to give them notice," which I do agree. Another would be the fines that pertain to the violation of having six plants. It was talked that there would be a fine of only $99, but then whenever it was stated that you could fine somebody up to $999, it was then Jeff Moore who said, you know, then, so 1,000 is not adequate, six plants could be, I don't know, 1,000 worth of product. Well, $1,000 worth of product, I cannot spend that in a month. I don't even make $1,000 because I live on social security. So I just wanted to bring awareness to you guys on what a medical patient suffers.
Thank you for coming. Jon Berton?
Hello, I'm back again. I live at 713 Snowberry, and I just want to leave you again with the question of what makes a good neighbor? I live in a really nice house. I moved to Longmont six years ago. I was living in a condo in Boulder, and my dream of owning a house came to fruition. I have a white picket fence, a little side yard, great neighbors, I can bicycle to King Supers. I have, it's a dream house. And from all outward appearances, it's like my dream come true, except Saturday and Sunday throughout the summer, and this Labor Day, this weekend, the noise from Mile High was intolerable. So I leave you with one question. What are the rights of homeowners who pay taxes in Longmont, and what constitutes a good neighbor? Thank you.
Jonathan Lee?
Hello, council, my name is Jonathan Lee, I live at 1246 Keighley Lane here in Longmont. I am here to discuss the issues, the regulations that you're looking to enforce on the marijuana growing. You know, I had a lot to say, but after listening to all of the other folks that came here tonight, they said it a whole lot more eloquently than I ever could, so I just want to add my voice to theirs. Okay? What you propose, I find, is frightening to be able to come into someone's home without a warrant. I think it's scary, it's almost worse than what we hear coming out of our presidential candidates, frankly. Okay? As a resident of this city since 2009 and a homeowner, I am appalled that it was even considered. I hope that you seriously stop and think about it, and I thank you for the seriousness in which all of you, with an exception, have looked at this whole thing. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. McPhail, excuse me.
My name is Don McPhail. I'm a 100 percent disabled vet. I reside between Mead and then 947 Emery here in Longmont. I'm not a recreational partaker, that's just, never have been, wasn't my thing, but I have found that I'm prescribed, right now, nine different medications for the various issues I have. And I've found that the oils help me with some plantar fasciitis, neuropathy, arthritis, I have a ton of things that, my list is this long. And so, lending to six plants for someone, and, you know, for me to go to someone as, you know, caregiver, whatever, they can't produce enough for me, and, you know, I'm on disability, so the matter of me having to go to the dispensary is becoming cost prohibitive. And I'm kind of thinking that you, as government officials, as people, I'm sure you're caring, and there's more veterans out there like me that, you know, a lot of the medications I take mess with my stomach, so then they make my stomach worse. They make my kidneys, they hurt, they affect my kidneys. You know, so I've had kidney issues. And so I'm hoping the love you have for your country, for the people like me that have served the country honorably, will, you know, go a long way to, you know, maybe rethinking that, and, you know, there's ways, I know you talked about smell, you know, maybe require people to put filtration systems in, something, you know, there's, I know they have filtration systems that hospitals use, it will filter out that smell, and it's not out the doors, or out the roof, or out wherever. But, you know, from a veteran, I'm just asking you guys to do what's right, for me, and for all the other veterans and the other people that are affected with, like Ashley here, with issues that are beyond our control. I plead with you to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. William Ritts?
Ritts. Hello. I know I'm not a Longmont resident, I'm 4635 18th Street in Boulder, but my caregiver is a homeowner in Longmont. I have three disabling medical conditions, I'm on disability, I collect social security, and your plant count is ludicrously low for people with serious medical problems. I have, I'm on nine different medications, and I take edible marijuana in the morning and in the night, and it requires a lot of plants. You're not being realistic. I'm on a limited income, it's fixed. Please do not confuse the commercial market with the medical market, and this is unconscionable. Thank you.
Georgina Johnston?
Good evening, mayor and councilman. Georgina Johnston, and I'm still up at the Super Late. This is very arresting tonight, you precious people, but I am arrested in a housing, I've been checking and checking, and still haven't found something affordable. Maybe I can buy if we can get it where it's not as high. So I feel like with you all, you're doing a good job, but I think you also need to be realizing we've been coming and kind of check about this, and maybe help out, because this is not good. My husband came tonight, but he hasn't been feeling good since he's on dialysis. So we belong to Longmont, we like this city, it's a wonderful city, and it's, we can't leave it because of, I mean, we don't want to leave it because the wonderful doctors, the wonderful people that keeps my husband alive. It's been five years in September here now, that he nearly died, so I feel like there's got to be affordable housing. The housing is not going to be, all these apartments are not going to be done for a year, so that's not going to be helping us. And we've been on two years, I mean, two months, almost going on the third one. So there's got to be something that's worked out. And also, I'll switch over, I had a grandson who was on marijuana, and he, he's dead now, but it wasn't good for him. I feel sorry for all these people, but also for all of us that are endangered. When they, sometimes it blows them around and makes them not do good where people are killed, so. I did not vote for it, and I don't want to hurt anybody's feelings, but I feel like that we're all important, too. So I feel like you're all doing a good job, thank you for listening to me, and I feel like that we will be getting something, and when I come off on my own with my husband, too, I feel like that you also should care about people. We're older, and we've been here and done lots of wonderful things for this town. So I'm sure something's going to work out, but maybe you can look yourself and be a blessing, too. So may I bless you and keep doing a wonderful job.
Thank you. That ends our first call, public invited to be heard. It's now time to move on to the consent agenda.
Mayor Coombs, the first item on your consent agenda is Item 8A, ordinance 201658, a bill for an ordinance making additional appropriations for the expenses and liabilities of the city of Longmont for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2016. January first, two thousand sixteen. Public hearing and second reading is scheduled for September twenty-seventh, two thousand sixteen. Item eight B is ordinance two thousand sixteen fifty-nine, a bill for an ordinance amending chapter four point one-two of the Longmont Municipal Code on Purchasing. Public hearing and second reading is scheduled for September twenty-seventh. Item eight C is ordinance two thousand sixteen sixty, a bill for an ordinance conditionally approving the vacation of easements generally located north of Ken Pratt Boulevard and east of Hoover Street. Public hearing and second reading is scheduled for September twenty-seventh. Item eight D is ordinance two thousand sixteen sixty-one, a bill for an ordinance amending title fourteen point three-two of the Longmont Municipal Code on Rates and Regulations Governing Electric Service. And the public hearing is scheduled for this item on October twenty-fifth. Item eight E is resolution two thousand sixteen eighty-five, approving the intergovernmental agreements between the city and the Longmont Housing Authority for the implementation of the Suites Debt Reduction Project. Item eight F is resolution two thousand sixteen eighty-nine, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and Boulder County Housing Authority for its housing counseling program. Item eight G is resolution two thousand sixteen ninety, approving the revocable permit and agreement between the city and Rocky Mountain Paddleboard LLC for paddleboard operations at Union Reservoir. Item eight H is resolution two thousand sixteen ninety-one, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the United States Secret Service for grant funding for reimbursement of overtime costs and expenses related to assisting the Colorado Electronic Crimes Task Force. And staff would like to pull items A, B, and D for short presentations.
Is that eight B?
A, B, and D.
Okay. Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I move passage of the consent agenda minus A, B, and D.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Let's vote. And that passes seven to zero?
Mayor Coombs, the next item on your agenda is item nine A, which is ordinance two thousand sixteen fifty-five, a bill for an ordinance making additional appropriations for the expenses and liabilities of the City of Longmont for the fiscal year beginning January first, two thousand sixteen. And there is no formal staff presentation on this item, but Teresa is here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Is there any questions from council before I open up the public hearing? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing on ordinance twenty sixteen dash fifty-five. Is there anybody from the public that'd like to speak on this ordinance? If seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing on ordinance twenty sixteen dash fifty-five. Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I move passage of ordinance twenty sixteen fifty-five.
Second. It's been moved and seconded by Councilmember Bagley. Let's vote. And that passes seven to zero?
Mayor Coombs, your next item is ordinance two thousand sixteen fifty-six, a bill for an ordinance amending chapter thirteen point two-zero of the Longmont Municipal Code on Public Lands. Again, there is no formal staff presentation on this, but staff is in the audience to answer questions.
Okay. Is there any questions from council for staff before I open up the public hearing? Okay, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing on ordinance twenty sixteen dash fifty-six. Is there anybody from the public that'd like to speak on this ordinance? If seeing no one, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing on ordinance twenty sixteen fifty-six. Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I'd like to move ordinance twenty sixteen dash fifty-six.
Second. All right, it's been moved and seconded. Let's vote. That passes seven to zero?
Mayor Coombs, your next item is ordinance two thousand sixteen fifty-seven, a bill for an ordinance amending section four point seven, two point oh-four-five of the Longmont Municipal Code on Economic Development Incentive Payments for Primary Job Creation. And Sean Lewis has a, no, Sean Lewis does not. There is no staff presentation, but they're here to answer questions.
All right, is there any questions from council? I don't see any, so I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing on ordinance twenty sixteen fifty-seven. Is there anybody from the audience that'd like to speak on this ordinance? Seeing no one, I'll go, close the public hearing on ordinance twenty sixteen dash fifty-seven. Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I would move passage of ordinance twenty sixteen fifty-seven.
Second. All right, it's been moved and seconded. Let's vote. Councilmember Peck, we're waiting for your vote. Okay, that passes seven to zero?
Mayor Coombs, the first item pulled from consent is the Additional Appropriations Ordinance, and Brian McGill, I believe, from our LPC, has a short presentation on this one.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Coombs, members of council. My name is Brian McGill, and I'm one of the utility rate analysts with Longmont Power and Communications. And I'm here tonight to give you an update on Next Light in conjunction with the additional appropriation request. So as you know, we've come a long way with the Citywide Fiber to the Premise project. We started out by getting approval from our citizens to legally provide broadband services. Next, we have, we had a feasibility study performed, and then we went back to the citizens again to get their approval for the sale of the bonds to fund the project. Next, we began preparing RFPs and went through the selection process to hire the design and construction firms to help us make this project a reality. Since then, we have made tremendous progress. At the beginning of the project, we divided the city into six sections, which we called phases. And currently, we are working in all six phases. In those six phases, we have completed three hundred miles of network construction, which is approximately eighty percent of the total network construction. Next, I'd like to talk to you about how we're doing in regards to our subscribers. Even during this extremely busy time, we are receiving high customer satisfaction scores from our customers. After a customer receives their Next Light service, we sent, we emailed them a customer satisfaction survey, asking them to rate us in four different categories. Initial sales experience, installation services provided, internet speed and reliability, and digital voice if they take advantage of the phone service that we provide. And our current average score is an excellent nine out of ten. As of this morning, we have over sixty-nine hundred Next Light subscribers, and this ties into the most exciting update we have to give you tonight, which is that the take rate in areas that have been completely marketed to is an amazing fifty-six percent. And to put that into perspective, the original feasibility study predicted that in year three, which is this year, we would have a twenty-seven percent take rate, and we would have a high take rate of thirty-six percent in year five. So that leads me into why we were asking for an additional appropriation tonight. Due to the fact that we are seeing such an outstanding take rate this early in the project, we are requesting an additional appropriation to cover these success-based expenses. As I just mentioned, the current take rate of fifty-six percent, which is the driving factor behind our broadband revenues, it's, that's double what the feasibility study had projected for this timeframe, while the increase in the project expenses that we're requesting is only seventeen percent over the original project budget. So why are these additional funds needed, and what will they cover? Again, they are needed to cover the additional expenses associated with the increase in demand, and the additional funds will cover expenses associated with increased installations, such as contracted labor, additional materials, additional equipment, and the need for increased bandwidth, as well as the related construction costs for design refinements. So what are the financial impacts? Even with the additional funds, this project still shows positive long-term cash flows due to the increased demand for the services. The increased take rate will generate an additional three million dollars of revenue per year over what was originally projected in the pro forma. And this increased revenue also means that the break-even year is still going to be in two thousand twenty-five as originally projected. And what we mean by the break-even year is that's the year when there will be available broadband utility funds that would be sufficient to pay off any outstanding bond balances. Also, the original plan did account for funds to be loaned from the electric utility to the broadband utility to cover startup shortfalls. However, with the increased revenues, this loan amount is anticipated to be paid back by the end of year two thousand twenty-one, which is actually seven years earlier than what was included in the original pro forma. So what are the next steps for this project? We're anticipating that the majority of network construction will be completed by the end of this year, and that the majority of technical services are projected to be completed by mid-year two thousand seventeen. And there will always be new installations associated with this project, but we are planning to have the majority of initial customer installs completed by the end of year two thousand seventeen. It's also good to keep in mind the many benefits to the community that this project provides. Our high-speed internet at affordable prices can be used as an economic development incentive to try and draw commercial customers to Longmont, and our residential customers are receiving a gig of service at the low rate of forty-nine ninety-five, which no incumbent can provide at such a low rate. Also, I'm not sure everyone has seen the article recently published on bizwest.com, but in that article, it attributes Longmont's number-three ranking nationwide for the fastest-average internet speeds directly to Next Light. These speed tests were conducted by and published in PC Magazine. So ending on that high note, I'd like to thank you for your time, and if you have any questions, LPC staff is here to provide answers.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Just to be clear, where's the money coming? It's a loan from?
From the electric fund.
Okay, so just, they have just seven million laying around? My question is, they just, they got seven million in cash, just sitting?
No, it's part of the fund balance, and so if you will look in the council comm, we'll require the use of fund balances from the electric fund, and it will cause the fund balance to go below the required reserves for a time period. So those are the reserves that we're holding, so to pull it down.
So reserves, okay.
One of the issues, one of the reasons why we wanted to really highlight this is because we almost talked about broadband being self-supporting, and this is a loan that will be paid back, and we wanted to highlight basically how it will be paid back in a shorter timeframe.
Thank you. Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I do have some questions, because you keep saying that it has a positive cash flow, but when I went back and looked at some of the figures, it's actually about four million dollars in the red, because the expenses outweighed the revenue from two thousand thirteen on, just in the broadband, not in the electric utility. So I'm a little concerned about the seven million, because when you look at the contribution from reserves, we're only going to have five hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars in there at the end of two thousand seventeen. And if those, if the cash flow once again doesn't outweigh the expenses, are you going to come back to us again next year with no reserves left to cover? So I'm a little confused as to how you say the cash flow is positive.
Yeah, so Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Peck, so, yeah, after we've done the new pro forma, we are showing that at the end of two thousand seventeen, we have, I think we'll have a net income of right around a hundred thousand. But then in two thousand eighteen is when we see, we start to see positive cash flows of upwards of three million, and so at that time, we'll start to pay back.
So you really don't have a positive cash flow until two thousand eighteen?
Well, in two thousand seventeen, we had, yeah, it's a hundred thousand dollar net income, but it's not enough to start making payments on the loan.
So what exactly is this money going, what are we going to get with this money? I mean, what are you going to spend it on? Do you have a, I guess, a line item budget that we can see where it's coming from? Because I am concerned that we continue showing a negative, a negative balance.
So in the original pro forma, as Brian had mentioned, we did indicate in there that we would have some short-term loans between the two utilities. And so the pro forma was done in two thousand thirteen, and now we're coming to the end of two thousand sixteen, and our construction costs are a little higher. One, we hired contractors to do installations because we've seen such a great take rate, and we're accelerating the construction, we're moving faster. And as materials are changing too, they're costing more, like your cellphone. Every year we get a new cellphone, it's bigger, it's better, it's, or smaller and better. But costs are changing, and so from two thousand thirteen to now, the costs for the project have changed, and we need more money to complete the project. And it's a short-term loan. We're having this great take rate, and we're seeing payback in eighteen and nineteen for this part of the loan.
So do we have on the bond balance, is this seventeen million, three hundred and twenty-one thousand, is that which is in the two thousand sixteen budget? Is that the, what's available on the bond?
So our budget for this year is twenty-two point eight million, and we've spent nineteen point eight. So we are almost out, have spent our bond money. That's where we, why we're requesting a short-term loan between the electric utility and the broadband utility, to complete our project.
And what if you don't make the projected income, cash flow?
Well, right now, we're just selling.
Where's that money going to come from?
We're selling these take rates. And if we don't see the, you know, we're just anticipating the projected take rates. I mean, we're seeing it all over the city right now. And so we just have a lot of, a lot of customers that are ready to get installed, and we're working really hard to get to them. We're really anticipating that we're going to get that take rate and that revenue.
Okay, I'm just really concerned, because we haven't had a positive cash flow in that, in that budget. And so it's so all projected, that when I look at the reserves that are left, and we don't come up in two thousand eighteen with a positive cash flow, I'm just wondering where that's going to come from.
Well, you know, upfront, you predicted we wouldn't have a positive cash flow at this point anyway. I mean, so I don't understand why it's, and then the fact that we're building out fifty percent more and only costing us seventeen percent more, you know, to me, this is all, this makes sense. I mean, I think this is a good news story that we should be proud of. You know, all small, all businesses are, well, not all, but a lot of businesses, because of the cost, when you have to build something as massive as this, it's a huge investment, and you don't get that money back until the subscribers are on signed-up monthly basis. But if you have, I mean, you're talking about, you're going to have maybe fifteen thousand subscribers paying fifty dollars a month, that's a lot of income that's going to be coming when this thing's built out.
So they can add the details to this question. So when we presented the pro forma to the council originally, we knew that the first year, we were going to have more funds going out than coming in, because we had to make the initial investment of building the system. So all of the trench work, all of the work that we had to do to build the main network, and then the cost in getting into the neighborhood, so it actually calculated that out, and we knew that the first year was going to be, it was going to look like it currently does. One of the things that changed that is the projection of the thirty-six percent take rate. So when you actually, when that is shifted from, actually twenty-six, but when you shift that take rate up to fifty-six percent, that's more wire that you have to bring into houses, more of the O N Ts that you have to bring into houses. That's a higher cost of the technicians to go in and install that into the homes. And so we haven't even had a full year of our first customers being connected. I believe we started connecting the first customers in October. So now we're starting to see that cash flow come in based on the folks that are connecting to the system, and that's what they're using as the projections as they look to the future. So it, the example I would give you, it's assume that it's akin to, we don't have a water system, but we have to build the water system, so we're dumping out a lot of cash initially to build the lines, the treatment capacity and everything else, and then as the customers are coming on, they're then paying that back in the process.
Okay.
Can you turn your mic off, or you got more questions? Councilmember Christensen?
I wanted to clarify something for the public, because I've been getting some questions about this, and... about this, and, and because we're bringing both of these things up tonight, and it is a little confusing. We're bringing this NextLight up, and NextLight, because we didn't used to have NextLight, but NextLight is now Power and Communications, and the fund is being blended together with the utilities, and some people are thinking that we're using the electrical utilities to finance broadband, which isn't true, which is a totally voluntary add-on. We will be talking about the electric, needing to raise, raise the electric rate, light, the electric rates in a few minutes, and that is a separate issue. It doesn't have anything to do with NextLight. We're not using NextLight, we're not using the electric fund to subsidize them, but we are taking a loan from that fund to help NextLight get over this hump for a few years. But it has nothing to do with the raising of the electric rates.
Councilmember Christensen, that's correct. We are one fund, but we're two separate utilities, and the revenues and expenses are tracked separately. So this will be a loan, we have a very healthy reserve balance right now, above what our minimum is, and so we're loaning some money out of that reserve balance. That'll be paid back with interest, so the electric rate payers will be whole once that's all paid back.
Let's see, any other questions from Councilmember Peck?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I was just going to move passage of ordinance 201658.
Fifty, 59. Yeah. All right. Yeah, 58. All right. So we've got first and second, let's vote on ordinance 201659. No, 58, okay, excuse me. Okay. First one. And that passes six to one with Councilmember Peck descending.
Mayor Coombs, your next item is ordinance 201659, a bill for an ordinance amending Chapter 4.12 of the Longmont Municipal Code on Purchasing, and I believe Diana Wilson is here to just talk briefly about the changes to that ordinance that was presented to you today.
Good evening, Mayor Coombs and council members. I'm Diana Wilson, purchasing manager. The reason that we're bringing this revision before you tonight is the results of a Department of Homeland Security audit or, or review of our policies. They found that we needed to have a policy in place in our written code to, to have a policy, a procedure for the disposal of any kind of federally funded in, funded equipment. So we started with that, and as we did that, we found that there were lots of changes that were needed definitions that were not in the code, cleanup about dated language, and so we made those in addition to adding that language. And we did have a last-minute change that you noted today. There were two items that got left out with all of them with multiple revisions, and they were just the, the two sections, 412-090 about allowing electronic signatures, and 412-320 to clarify that the purchasing and contracts manager has a responsibility for the selection of the construction contracting methods. So those were those last minute, they weren't last minute, they were included, but they were inadvertently left out, so. Did you have any questions about any of the changes?
Councilmember Christensen?
I have several questions and one suggestion, or two suggestions. Why we're, I understand why the federal government wanted to do this for federal grants. I don't understand why state and any other grants was also added to this.
Okay. The, the state is also a pass-through agency. Some of the flood projects that we're doing now are not only funded by federal funds, but CDOT funds or Department of Labor Administration funds, DOLA funds. So there's other agencies involved in some of these projects. At times, those regulations come into play in our, in our procurements. So we wanted to make sure that we are covering everything.
Okay. I, because I have a lot of experience with getting bids over the last many decades of writing out bids myself, and for national and international things, and for evaluating bids, I, I kind of, I understand this, but I also understand how much this can cost an entity, a company, or an entity, a city, or a university, if the purchasing manager starts to show a little bit of favoritism. And I, I want to know what the accountability, who the purchasing manager or project manager has accountability to. Because it seems to me, when I read through this, that if someone, for instance, is disbarred, they can write a protest letter, but it only goes to the contrast, contract manager who's the person they're protesting against. Is there any entity that has, does the city manager have ultimate oversight?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes, absolutely.
I actually had a conversation about something like that.
Yeah.
Last week.
Right. Okay. I have, I have two suggestions that are kind of small, but might solve something, and this is because of a situation I saw when I was employed at a university who shall remain nameless. What I saw was that what would happen is a, in the, the bids, they would come in, and then when the last bid was received, all the bids were received, the last day that they could possibly change anything, a certain favored vendor was invited over for lunch and would see the best offer sitting inadvertently on the person's laptop, and they could see what it was, and then they would send in an amended bid. I, I would add that there can't be any amended bids after, they've all, they just get one shot, instead of sending in, having the possibility of somebody sending it.
Alternate bids, and it is in our code that they're only allowed to submit one single bid that they're.
Okay.
Yes.
That's good. And another thing that is a problem is someone can say, you know, $5,000 and under has really, that's sort of considered small change, and you don't have to get three bids, and it's, there's very little oversight, and that makes sense because there's, but if it's possible to split a project in order to avoid oversight, some people will split a project into phases and into chunks, and therefore, there's a $5,000, and a $5,000, and a $5,000, and a $5,000.
Yes.
There has to be a way to make sure that a project cannot be split in a way to avoid oversight.
Yes, ma'am. Currently, we, our procurement specialists look at every requisition that comes through, make sure that those are, those expenses are not aggregate over the, the $5,000 limit. If they are, we do go back. Also, on the procurement card side, those, those expenses are reviewed.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. I, I think these, these are good changes, and.
Thank you.
Thank you for doing this.
More questions?
Thank you.
Councilmember Peck?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I would move passage of ordinance 201659.
Yes. All right. It's been moved and seconded, let's vote. That passes seven to zero.
Mayor Coombs, your next item from consent is ordinance 201661. This is the code changes on the rates and regulations governing electric service, and I believe Kate Medina will give us a short presentation on this.
Members of council, Kate Medina, utility rate analyst for Longmont Power and Communications. When I was here in July, sharing our cost of service study with you, you gave us direction to move forward with a one-time rate increase in 2017, keeping rates consistent in '18 and Just a recap of our rate study, we did include a three-year rate plan. We had done that for '14, '15, and '16, and that worked very well for our customers to have a rate increase the first year and keep the rates consistent for rate stability. We covered wholesale rate increases. Pete was here that evening and talked about the rate increases that Platte River would be seeing over the next three years, so we included those in our study. We included meeting our minimum reserve requirement from current and future projects and current programs. Just to, a reminder, we did perform the cost of service study, and what that does is it allows us to figure out the, what it costs to run our utility. We allocate those costs and design rates by rate class to meet cost of service, and the result was an average overall 3.4% rate increase. It's always a good start to tell you how we're doing, how our rates are doing compared to the state averages. The CAMU Association, which is the Colorado Association of Municipal Utilities, did a survey in July of this year. Fifty-eight utilities in Colorado responded to that survey. Happy to say our residential rates are the second lowest in the state, and that means we would have to raise our rates 51% in order to meet the state average. Our residential rates also are the lowest among the Platte River cities. Small, commercial, fifth lowest, large, commercial, fourth, and industrial, fourth. So we're very, very proud to be able to bring low rates to our customers. The 3.3% rate increase is average system-wise, as, as you can see, each rate class, we put the customers in classes based on similar patterns. Those vary, but I do want to say our average residential customer will see a $2 a month rate increase. We are proposing some other changes to the municipal code, as you'll see in the ordinance in your packet. Obviously, the rates are changing. We've changed the verbiage for the franchise fee to the 8.64%, which we've agreed to. We've added some information in there under for self-generation customers that allows both customer-armed and third-party armed generation systems. Because the general fund rates are designed to cover wholesale costs only, rather than try and estimate what the next three years of wholesale costs will be, we'd like to just update those annually as those rates change. We will be coming back on October 25th for our second reading. The readings, and there's a time lag in there, is by statute, we need to notify outside-city limit customers by mail of the rate increase. And now, I'd like to open it up for questions.
Any questions or comments?
I guess I'll, I'll start, you know, 75, you know, 80% of our cost is the cost of power, and that's determined by Platte River, and, you know, we're doing just a fantastic job, I think, of running a great utility here at a very affordable price. It's extremely reliable and robust. I know when, during the flood, our neighborhood was above the flood, but, you know, so they turned off the power because the greens was flooded, but in, within 10 minutes, they were able to reroute the power for our neighborhood to a whole nother subsystem. So they have double refunded, you know, systems so that you're not just tied to one power substation, and, you know, I think the robustness, I mean, it's, I think I can remember only two or three times in the years I've lived at Longmont that we've been without power, and it's just been brief times. So I'm very fortunate and excited about where we are with our electric utilities. I think you guys do a great job. I think Platte River does a great job, and Platte River's now going to be opening up a 30-megawatt solar farm this month, which is really neat. So, good job.
Thank you.
Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Okay, so these are changes, 3.2 is for rate, electric rates, is that correct?
It's an average 3.4% rate increase, but each class is looked at uniquely.
So it doesn't apply to your service fee? The $10 and change that you see on your bill for?
Yes, so each class, there's a monthly customer charge, there's an energy charge, and some of our rate classes have a demand charge. And we design the rates, some of them have a higher increase in their monthly customer charge and the energy charge, so it will affect both elements. But on average, for example, with the electric, with the residential rates, they'll, they'll be paying about $2 more a month. Their rate increase will be about $2 for the average residential customer.
On the total bill before sales tax?
On the total bill before sales tax.
Okay. Is that, I mean, when you say rate, I look at how much, how much I use and how much I pay for what I use, and then the service fee is above that, that's just, what, reading the meter and sending a bill?
The service fees are, in quotes, are a fixed cost. So it's to raise your meter, maintain your meter, process a bill, process your payment. It's our distribution lines, it's our substations, it's all of our salaries to maintain our utility and to maintain the integrity and reliability of our utility. So that's our fixed cost, and then the other 72% of our expenses in utility is to buy the power from, from Platte River, and as the mayor noted, they have the lowest wholesale rates in the state. So we get the lowest wholesale rates to us, and we have the second lowest residential rates in the state as well. So we're able, with that combination, to keep the rates low for our customers.
So let me try again.
Okay.
The rates we pay is, what, it's currently like around seven and change for the first 750 kilowatt hours, and then it goes up after that. Now it's going to go to eight cents, slightly over eight cents. I have a question, real clear on this. Does the rate increase, are, are we going to see our service fees increase?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I was trying to find out.
Sorry about that. You will see your service rate increasing.
Councilmember Christensen?
I'd also like to point out, and thank you again, I've, in 20 years, I think I've had two times without power and for less than an hour. So when I lived in Denver, it was like a constant problem. This also will allow us to continue the life support discount and the low-income senior and disabled customer discount.
Correct.
And so, that is, that's still in force. If people are having difficulty paying the extra money, then they need to contact city services.
That is correct. Those discount programs will stay in effect.
Yes.
Thank you.
While they don't see any other questions, I would like to clarify, the last time I powered, we know that Delmarias was out of town, so maybe he shouldn't ever go out of town. Just kidding. Councilmember Moore, do you have another question?
I was going to move 2016 to 61.
All right. It's been moved and seconded, let's vote. And that passes seven to zero. Thank you. All right. You guys want to take a five-minute break? Yeah. Whew.[551.12]
Also are using a population growth from planning of 2.7% for next year. And a economic or inflation type growth of 2.4% from a state CPI indicator. In addition to that, then we are looking at the large sales tax generators and how they are doing so far this year and the new dollars that we're receiving from Amazon and from the businesses at Village at the Peaks. Worked those into their, into the equation as well. Some of it is, of course, is based on estimates at this point with Sam's only just recently opened, as well as Whole Foods not yet opened, and we are not sure what those sales activity would be versus as well, how much of that might end up being cannibalization. So all those are factors that we try to work into our projections. But, you know, overall, we did end up with a pretty strong amount of sales tax as a result of these estimates, which we'll be looking at in a few minutes. So our building permit revenue estimates, this is what we are needing to reach budget in 2016 to at least to reach the amount of dwelling units that were identified is combined total of 487 dwelling units through July of this year. We have 350 dwelling units already in place. So with five more months to go, we're well on our way of meeting that estimate. We're also doing very well in the commercial evaluation area. So a lot of our growth really is, in fact, from increased value for all permits, which were up 39% through July, and I believe just received a report for August today. And it was, it's growing almost close to 50% growth through August in the overall valuation of permits from 2017 compared to 2016. So that is where we're generating a lot of our use tax growth from. So this is our projections from the planning department for 2017 is 1,009 dwelling units. It's quite an increase from the 487 this year, but you can see most of that is from the multifamily units. And as you're well aware, there's a lot of multifamily projects in the hopper that are, we pretty much count on those, that type of activity taking place in 2017. And that's been worked into our building permit revenue estimates and plan review estimates. So property tax revenue, so as you probably mostly are aware, we do not receive our initial estimate of, a required estimate, I should say, from the county assessor of the property values until a few days before we hand this proposed budget to you. We did actually receive some information from them a couple of months in advance that we did utilize and put together this proposed budget. And so it includes an increase of seven tenths of a percent, which is $119,000, not a significant increase in property tax. What we did is we took the values that they identified a couple of months ago and we eliminated any commercial growth because that we would attribute to the Village at the Peaks mostly, if not all, and that would end up being property tax TIP, and so would not go into this number, but instead would be going to the Village at the Peaks fund as a revenue source. So what we did look at was the revenue from residential and industrial. And we did pretty much take all that was identified, which was only $119,000. And unfortunately, even seven tenths of a percent was not a conservative approach. And when we did receive the first valua-, or official valuation amounts in late August, we found that we were, we will lose $83,685 of that estimate. We do have some monies that were budgeted in our ETS budget that we were pretty much holding off on utilizing, so that if, in fact, the tax estimates did come in lower, we would be able to instead reduce those expenses in line with the amount of property tax revenue decline that we're seeing at the $83,000 level. So we were looking to potentially use that money to fund a FTE request within ETS, but we were going to wait and see what the final number was. And so instead, we will instead remove that from the proposed budget to offset the decline in property tax revenue. Whoops. All right, update on the general fund reset. As you all may be aware, about four or five years ago, we identified up to a $3 million need to reset the city's general fund. We've been chipping away at that over the last four budgets. And this here is reducing that reset down to $300,000, or an estimated $300,000. Two items that we did work into this proposed budget are an ATF methodology change and facilities maintenance. Excuse me. And that has about $200,000 impact to the general fund. And then we also moved our annual PC replacements to an ongoing expense of $143,000. So about almost $350,000 combined impact of reducing the reset, leaving about $300,000 more of ATF-type adjustments to be made, and we think we'll be able to eliminate that after the next proposed budget for '18. So the 2017 proposed budget, last year, for '16, our 70, we had $70.9 million of general fund ongoing revenues and expenses. This year, we have $74.9 million of ongoing revenues and expenses. So it's 5.6% growth and just short of $4 million greater than we had in 2016. And this here is showing, and I, actually, in your council communication for tonight, there's an attachment, attachment B, and that actually is breaking down the changes in the ongoing revenue and expenses from 2016 to 2017. And I'm going to take you through a lot of those line items here over the next few minutes. But you can probably follow me on that attachment B as well. So first, beginning with the changes in the ongoing expenses, there were just some minor reductions in ongoing expenses of $27,000 and then increases new ongoing expenses of just short of $4 million. The reductions were liability insurance, very small amount of adjustment of $124. And then we also had reductions to offset mid-year cost increases from job audits. They totaled $27,379. We have increases, on the increase side of the ledger for our ongoing expenses, we have a number of items and a little bit more detail to go through. First off, we have increases in ongoing Level 1, Level 2, and also ongoing related to our one-time expenses. So most of this is from $945,000 for ongoing Level 1 expenses. Take you through those in a minute. And ongoing Level 1 are expenses that we will incur, whether we budget for them or not. A lot of them are overtime-related that we're going to incur from pay increases. There's contract expenses or just O&amp;M-type expenses that we're already incurring that we need to work into our budgets. Ongoing Level 2 are kind of increased level of services, where we're trying to get some more dollars into the budget to do more than we were doing in 2016. And then ongoing related to one-time items is, we have over $2 million of one-time items in the general fund, capital-type items. And so there are some ongoing expenses that are tied to some of those capital items, like maintenance costs and things like that. So $66,000 is ongoing that's related to those. So starting with the detail on the ongoing Level 1, again, it was a total of $945,000 of ongoing Level 1 expenses. What I'm doing is just taking you through the ones that are of somewhat significant amounts, so I'm leaving anything under $10,000 or $5,000 as a cutoff to not, to bother with them. First item here is contracting for non-paid disconnects. And you might remember that you appropriated for this earlier this year in 2016. We outsourced this service late last year, and it was after we put together the proposed 2016 budget, so it's not a part of our base budget to this point, and we're adding it in 2017, as we did during the appropriation process earlier this year. And it is offset by fees that we charge for that service. Next is outsourcing utility bills. We've been doing this for about a year and a half, and when we initially put together our estimates for outsourcing utility bills, we underestimated the amount of bills that we would be sending, as well as the cost for some printing. And so we're seeing some greater costs that we're incurring for the outsourcing of bills than we originally anticipated. We're also getting a little bit more service from the contractor than we originally were looking for, allowing our customers to be able to look back at some of their bills. So all this is contributing to an increased cost of almost $75,000 there. Platte River Power Authority, they operate our customer information system and do the programming side of that for us. They have increased costs that they pass on to Longmont and Fort Collins, who both utilize the same CIS software, and our share of that is $40,000. Moving on to some ETS expenses, we have connectivity, ongoing maintenance of almost $90,000, and then Office 365 licenses of $50,000. We have, pushing that real fast, ain't I? Does not want to sit. There we go. Okay. So the flood recovery office expenses, this is dollars that are being offset from FEMA revenues. This is just the operating-type cost. There are also some salaries that are associated with the recovery office that are also added in 2017's budget. In addition to this, we have some maintenance costs down below for the risk management origami program, which does claims reporting. We have munis maintenance costs, which is our financial system. Online priority-based budgeting is something we're going to be showing you a glimpse of next week, during the budget presentation, but we are, this is actually a increment of the amount of the costs that we're adding to our budget. We already have some dollars that we are steering towards this, but the remaining $5,600 is to pay for the annual maintenance cost for this programming. And then we have added $20,000 for the municipal court to have court-appointed attorneys, which is a new mandate under state law.
Councilmember Bagley's got a question for you.
Thank you, Mary Coon. What is, anytime I see $6,600 for an expense next to the word origami? Just for my own.
So origami is our, the name of our claims management software.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Just making out so we'll be sure.
It's expensive origami.
Okay, so moving on, more ongoing Level 1 expenses. We have $113,000 in public safety overtime. Most of that's tied to pay rate increases from collective bargaining. There's about $20,000 of it that is also tied to public safety training costs. There's an increase, oh, no, I'm sorry, I must have separated that. No, there actually, there is $20,000 for overtime, as well as there is a public safety training cost of 18.8 as well. And then public safety staff psychologist for $13,500, one master police officer appointment of almost $10,000. And then there's a bunch of other minor public safety line items that we're not covering here, but they total about $46,000. Then moving into some community services, ongoing Level 1 expenses, we have a few items from the library, $15,000 for courier costs, and also $15,000 for collection agency expense. This is really not a new cost, but we're breaking, we've been netting this out of our revenue in the past, and so we're now breaking it out and reducing the revenue. $5,500 for library catalog software and some overtime in the library. And then museum ticket revenue sharing of $30,000. This has to do with the auditorium. We partnered to produce performances at the auditorium, and we split the ticket revenue with those partners. So rather than appropriate for those dollars during the year, which is what we've been doing in 2016, we're going to actually budget for it here in the proposed budget, and it's offset by ticket revenue. Additional ongoing Level 1 expenses, we have increases, contract costs for parks maintenance of $18,500, custodial contract maintenance cost of $7,000, $15,500 for the mosquito control program, and $9,000 for contracting for cleaning the restrooms at Union Reservoir. And then AVL, AVL is automated vehicle locator. These are replacement boxes and cell phone fees for AVL in Public Works and Natural Resources for the parks area of $10,600. And finally, we have increased utilities expense for city facilities of $30,000. So that's the Level 1 expenses. And now moving again into the Level 2 expenses, which I mentioned, they're total $468,000. This does not include any FTE, new FTE, which in a sense, we do consider those to be Level 2 requests. So this here on this slide is actually most all of the Level 2 requests that are O&amp;M-related. First of all, $115,000 that we've added to our affordable housing fund transfer, raising the ongoing transfer annually to $540,000 in the '17 proposed budget. I mentioned the PC replacements already, and then we have temporary wages for a PC specialist for installing those PCs. And then some temp wages. These, the next two items here are, you'll see again, they are being paid for with incremental development revenue, which I'll cover in a few minutes. But there are temp wages in development services and a landscape architect contract. And finally, the last item there is ongoing expense. So we're adding three new police officer positions out of the general fund, and each of those come with a certain amount of ongoing expense, and this is the total for all three of those out of public safety. So other ongoing expenses that are increasing, and they're all detailed on that worksheet on Exhibit B, or Attachment B that I referred to. First of all, we have $627,000 for increased in collective bargaining pay, or public safety pay, basically. We have step pay increases in public safety as well of $61,000. Other pay increases are throughout the rest of the general fund, $706,000. And then we have new positions that are being added in, or proposed to be added in 2017 of eight and a half FTE, a total of $702,000. Be going through those positions in a couple of minutes. Five and a half of those are new for 2017. Three of them you just reviewed in the last month and approved with an additional appropriation ordinance in August, and they're being filled currently in development services. And then finally, the old higher police pension contribution that I referred to in my presentation last week. We have increased workers' comp costs of almost $82,000 in the general fund. Cable cost, a cable trust contract increases with our projections for cable revenue, cable franchise revenue increases. 25% of that always goes towards the cable trust under your financial policies. We have almost $250,000 from fleet lease charge increases. Most of that is from increases in depreciation, so that's from adding new vehicles in the last year or more. About $190,000 of it is from depreciation. We've also had a lot, a number of purchase credits last year that were credited against our leases for 2016 compared to none this year, and so that in turn is a lot of the difference, because we actually have a decrease for the general fund of almost $58,000 of O&amp;M costs from fleet. But because of the depreciation increase and the change in the purchase credits, we have an overall net increased cost of $250,000. Human Service Agency funding of almost $47,000 increase, and this is, again, under your financial policies, and it's tied to the amount of tax change, tax increase. It's now a new percentage that we identified last year, which I have no clue what it is because it's a very odd number now, but we'll be looking at that financial policy in the next week or two. But that's the, impact of that change actually is probably to the benefit this year of the Human Service Agency funding, as opposed to if it was just a percentage of ongoing revenue as it was in the past. And then finally, we have $23,000 for recreation community of events. That's going to be offset by some revenue as well on the revenue side of the ledger. So the FTE that are being proposed in this general fund budget for 2017, I already made reference to the three police officers. We're also adding one FTE Museum Visitor Services Manager. A lot of that cost is offset by auditorium revenue. And then we have three half FTE positions. One's a senior accountant to help us deal with our grant accounting, which has increased considerably in recent years, as well as our fixed asset accounting that, as you'll recall, we, has been challenging us in the last year or two, so we're catching up on that. The purchasing card administrator, we have a half position already, we're increasing this to a full-time position. There is purchasing card rebates, or purchasing, P-card purchase rebates that we receive from the amount of spend that we do with P-cards, and it offsets the cost of this position. And this is to be able, this position is needed to administer the P-card program and help us to audit those expenses, and, you know, so we can keep up with all of you that use those P-cards. And then the final position here is the increase of a half FTE of a park superintendent. This is combined with the changes in Public Works and Natural Resources with the compost operation coming into play next year, but really what's driving the need here is to increase this position that has been split between parks and solid waste to have a full-time focus on parks, which is where it was being drawn mostly in the first place, most of its attention to. And then the three FTE that were added recently in development services that you approved last month are the building inspection supervisor, application support analyst, and then a half historic preservation planner, and a half administrative assistant. Okay, so now looking at the revenue side of the ledger, the decreases in the general fund revenue, we've, we continue to try to refine our revenue estimates, and we've had a number that have not been reaching our estimates in the recent years, and so we're trying to bring them down and not get, not get tempted to raise them again in the future and be burned again, as we have in the past. And these are some of those on this slide here that have been a trouble for us over the last couple of years. Natural gas franchise, it peaked a couple of years ago, really at a very high amount, over $800,000, and we got tempted to raise it up as a result, and so we've been reducing it since. And so we're bringing it down $119,000 this year. The telephone franchise, this gradually continues to reduce. It's based on the number of lines in the community, and so that number continues to decrease. So we're reducing that by $8,800. Cigarette tax is another source, goes, it's funneled to us through the state, but that has been increasing over the years as well, so we're decreasing that $10,000. And court fines and fees now, this has been probably high for a couple of years now. We were hoping that we would see the activity that we had, used to see two or three years ago. This is a combination of a reduction in this type of activity, as well as really priorities and the ability of the police department to be able to concentrate on these type of activities that might generate these type of fines. We've had other issues that really consume their time greater than that, and so as a result, we have seen court fines and fees go down probably for three years now, and we're trying to reduce this down because we're never coming close to those estimates in our, in our actuals. And then finally, we have some miscellaneous revenues that were decreased as well, totaling about $36,000 from a number of different areas. Some other decreases in ongoing revenue from elevator inspection fees of $10,000. The hazmat IGA is $30,000 that we received from the county, or the city of Boulder, city of Boulder. And so we may or may not receive this in 2017. There is an effort to put together a countywide or entity-wide hazmat authority that is being considered. We have not yet, Longmont has not yet decided whether or not we're going to be a part of it. The $30,000 from Boulder will be going towards that hazmat authority versus going to the city of Longmont if it does come to fruition next year. So not knowing for sure where that's going, we didn't want to budget for something that we might not receive, so we removed that. And then finally, we have $8,000 decrease in false alarm fines and fees, which are related to public safety response. Our increases in revenue, so I mentioned that sales and use tax was a big factor, and it is certainly in this budget, almost $2.1 million of sales and use tax increase. Again, talked about the different factors that went into our estimate and what drives that increase. This is over 50% of the increase in revenue for the general fund for 2017. The property tax number, which I mentioned before, and that will come down, increase in cable franchise revenue, and then the three other city utilities that are also paying franchise fees that, based on their estimates of revenue for next year. We have increase in building permits and plan check fees. Again, this gets back to our building permit revenue estimates and the valuations. A lot of this is generating incremental development revenue, which we'll talk about here in a few more slides. Our recreation fees, this is offsetting that community recreation efforts, this is $20,000 there. We have $51,000 of, this is not, none of these are fee increases, by the ways. This is reflecting the level of revenue that we are generating currently. So the Union Reservoir fees, this is going up based on the activity and the actual usage of the Union Reservoir. The P-card rebates that I was referring to before, those are going up $20,000 this year, and then fire inspection fees of $13,000. Okay, other ongoing revenues increases from the museum auditorium of $80,000. We have other charges, so it's a number of charges for services throughout the general fund. They all, the rest of them total increases are about $19,000 here. We have intergovernmental, this $270,000 or so is representing a lot of the FEMA grant revenue that we are budgeting for, for the flood recovery operations. And then administrative transfer fee increases over 2016 of $117,000. I mentioned that on the expense side, the increase from the outsourcing of the shut-offs, this is the revenue related to that, as well as for the disconnect tag fees that we send out ourselves, and there's a fee associated with that. That's, was formerly in the electric fund, and that's now in the general fund this year. And then we have some increases in library fines, and then our estimate for interest revenue from a little bit higher. revenue from a little bit higher interest rates as well as higher fund balances. So again, this is our overall ongoing revenues and expenses. They increase 5.6% from 2016 to 2017. Incremental development revenue for '17, again, and we mentioned the 1,009 dwelling unit estimate. So our financial policy is that there is a base level of 120 dwelling units, and the revenue that we generate from those dwelling units is considered to be ongoing revenue for ongoing operations of the city, of the development services in the general fund. Anything over that is considered to be incremental development revenue. We can use those dollars for ongoing expenses, but they are subject to reduction when the permit levels decline. We have a little over $800, $3,000 of incremental development revenue in this proposed budget. And the use of those is going towards these positions. We added, the first three positions were added in the 2016 budget. They're continuing in '17. They were, so they were previously funded with incremental development revenue as fixed-term expenses, and they are continuing in '17. Plans Examiner, a senior planner, and a permit technician. And then the three positions, the three FTE that were added last month that are posted currently or being filled currently or have been, the Building Inspection Supervisor, the Application Support Analyst, and the half Admin Assistant and the half Historic Preservation Planner. And then, as I mentioned previously, we have Landscape Architect Contract and Temp Wages in Development Services. So most of that, and there's some additional ongoing expenses for, again, increases in cost for positions that we've added through incremental development revenue in previous Okay, so talk now a little bit about the general fund reserve policy. This first slide is what the general fund reserve is, looks like today. And on the top part here is the reserve policy targets, and this is based on the 2016 budget. And so our table reserve is that amount of $3.559 million that gets refigured after each fiscal year is completed. So we won't know the change of that for '17 until next April or so. The emergency reserve target of 8%, it's $5.6 million. We have a stabilization reserve target of 3% to 8%, which would be anywhere from $2.1 million to $5.6 million. So that gives us a total reserve target of 16% to 21% of a reserve, which is $11.3 million to $14.8 million. So what we have funded currently, we do obviously have the table reserve funded at $3.59 million. We have emergency reserves funded of 6.35% or $4,467,000. That includes no new dollars from 2016. We budgeted to add $480,000 in 2016. We used $225,030 of that for making our Village at the Peak COP payment on June 1st. The balance of that is $255,000. So that's being held still, but I am feeling relatively confident that we hopefully will not have to tap that when we make our payment on December 1st. And if that's not the case, and if, I mean, if that is the case and it doesn't get used for that purpose, then we will add it to the emergency reserves for 2016. So this is what we are showing for '17 now, based on a new budget of $4 million greater than 2016's. We have new percentage targets. Table reserve, again, still the same, gets refigured next year. The emergency reserve is a little higher at 8%. The target is almost $6 million there. Stabilization reserve from 3% to 8% is $2.2 million to $6 million. It gives us a total overall target of 15 and 3/4 to 20 and 3/4%. $11.8 million to $15 and 1/2 million is our reserve policy targets in total. So what we're showing here down below is where we would be going with this budget. First, the table reserve, and the emergency reserves is adding that $255,000 that I have left from 2016, and we'd bring that up to 6.3% or $4.7 million. And in this budget, we're proposing to add to reserves $690,000 and change here, a little over 0.9% of the total operating budget, which would give us a total funded reserve of 12% or $8,973,000. So if all goes well, we will continue to be making some more progress here in moving towards that overall target. Does seem like it takes us a long time to get there, but on the bright side, the number, the amount of our reserves continues to increase from year to year. And, you know, it's a reserve that we really have never really had to go into the reserve to tap it. The old that we've had to do is like we did this year in the year of the flood, we just didn't put money into the reserve in those funds that we intended to put in. But we've never actually taken money out of the reserve, which is a good thing. So moving into one-time expenses. Now, all these are included on a attachment in your packet, which is on pages S12 to S13. We have two pages there that detail every, all these dollars, line on it by line, I'm here, that make up this $2,222,000. We're categorizing them here in these four major areas. One's capital equipment of $485,000. Then our IT equipment alone, which is $661,000. And then small equipment, which is not capitalized, of $2,400. And finally, one-time services or expenses of $871,000. The capital equipment, these are, again, I'm just giving you some of the larger ones now in each of these categories. So like I said, there's two pages, a list of two pages there, and I'm going nowhere near the full list here, but just the large dollar amount ones. So on the capital equipment, large dollar items, in public safety, we have an in-mass communication system for fire of $150,000. We have fire alarm panel replacement in facilities for $165,000. This is, we're going to start changing out these fire alarm panels so that we can meet the new system and code requirements. And this is going to be taking care of three facilities, Civic Center, the library, and the Safety and Justice Center. So we're going to continue to do this over the next few years for other facilities as well. And then we have two vehicles here. One's an upgrade to a jail van that's being replaced, so this is the upgrade cost to upgrade the vehicle, and then a new van for Youth and Children Resources. In the IT equipment area, we have $175,000. This is for a report-writing system for public safety. This is just an analysis in the beginning to put some dollars towards this effort. And then in addition to that, we have $125,000 for a functionality analysis for our utility billing customer information system. So that is about 20 years old. We've been partnering with Fort Collins on the use of this CIS system. They're beginning to move in a new direction. They're looking to replace the software. We're looking to see whether, what direction we're going to go into. Are we going to replace, are we going to stay with the software we have? We're going to go in the same direction they are going, or are we going to go in a different direction on our own? So really, we're going to analyze our needs next year, and that's what these dollars are for. We have $70,000 for enterprise data backup hardware. This replaces server and data storage equipment that supports our entire data backup and recovery system. Its five-year life cycle is complete, and we need to replace that. And then we have $57,000 for upgrading data security protection. So then in the small equipment area, we have, most of these are, I think all of these are public safety items. So it's small equipment that they utilize, bulletproof vests, helmets, gear lockers, night vision attachments for SWAT rifles, and then TASER replacements. And then finally, the services or expenses, we have equipment for new police officers, and really, I think this probably should have fallen into one of the other categories, but this is ongoing expense that, I'm sorry, one-time expense that is necessary for the three new police officers. So with every new three police officers, we buy at least one vehicle, and then there's a number of pieces of equipment that go along with adding new police officers as well. There's a proposal on the very large ballot we heard about earlier this evening that will increase the minimum wage to $15, since that's an unknown at this point in time. We have budgeted the general fund share of that. If that were to go into place as a one-time expense for 2017, it would obviously become ongoing in the long run if it were to pass. But that's $117,000 and change in this year's budget. And then I'm going to ask Karen Roney, Community Services Director, to step down, and I think she is going to do a little slideshow on the next two items that have to do with, well, she will explain that soon. But you want to get to your, yeah, you've got to pull it up.
Karen Roney with the Community Services Department, Mayor and members of council. So just want to spend a couple of minutes talking about the two requests that Jim cited. And basically, these resources will help us to try to address some ongoing behavioral issues that we've been encountering with, there's a lot of feedback here, that we've been encountering at many of our public facilities. I think council and mayor, you might have heard a little bit about this when we had your joint meeting with the library board a couple of months ago. But yes, we've been having a variety of issues with problem and disruptive behaviors in and around several of our facilities. So for several months, we've been working as an interdepartmental task force that's cross-functional. Sean has been leading that effort. And as a group of city staff members, we were really trying to figure out how do we be welcoming to all and making sure that our facilities continue to be safe and welcoming for all? And that's the challenge, and that's the balance that we have been, we've been working on. So we have been studying the issues that we've been experiencing. We've been coming up with recommendations for different practices and internal policies that we think might be helpful. And then the task force also worked to prioritize some action items, which we included with the 2017 budget. We are not complete with our work, but we did have some clear action steps that we thought we could include in the 2017 budget. Our highest priority is really around creating what, it sounds pretty simple, but it's really some standards of behavior that we expect with, in our public facilities, by everyone who participates and comes and enjoys our facilities, and to have consistent protocols for how we hold people accountable when folks aren't living up to the standards of behavior that we really need to happen for it to be an enjoyable experience for all in our facilities. So what are we talking about here? So this is just, I'm not going to go over all of these, but just to give you an idea of, these are the kinds of challenges that we've been experiencing in our facilities, which makes it a very difficult experience for our customers, for all of our customers, as well is quite a challenge for our staff members to really be able to handle those behaviors, provide services to customers. And we are asking some of our staff members to basically intervene in ways that they just never would have imagined in their professional training and what they are, were hired here at the city of Longmont to do and to provide. The bulk of our facilities that are experiencing these challenges have to do with our facilities in and around the Civic Center campus, certainly at Roosevelt campus with the Memorial Building and Senior Center in the downtown area, and certainly in some of our parks and greenways. These aren't the only facilities that are experiencing these challenges, but certainly they're the ones that are the focus of our discussion, and those facilities that seem to be experiencing a significant amount of these problems. So as I started to mention, the impacts that we really are seeing in our facilities, and not only with our customers, but certainly with city staff, is that, you know, that some of our customers are feeling intimidated to come into some of our facilities. There's some expressed concern about their safety. We have had both paying customers and non-paying customers have indicated that they're going to stop using our city facility because it's just not the experience that they are looking for. I mentioned that we have asking staff to perform some tasks that they would have never imagined that they needed to do and aren't really equipped with the training for them to be successful in doing that. And then, and then when all else fails and we don't know what to do to deal with bad behavior, we call the police. And the police are, you know, they have a lot of calls. They have a lot of issues to respond to in our community. And, you know, and what we really are trying to do is what can we do to be more effective as a staff so that we aren't relying on the police for everything, but really to look at what is the most appropriate role for our police to have in enforcement, as well as for all of us as city staff members to have ownership and to be able to feel comfortable and confident in handling disruptive behaviors in our facilities, so that hopefully we extinguish that and that we continue to have a great experience for all. So Sean is going to talk about these next couple of slides.
Thanks, Karen. Sean Lewis, Assistant City Manager. As Karen mentioned, we've been working with an action team that's really digging into the recommendations that actually came about a year ago from a frontline task force, where we looked at the folks who were really on the front lines of the organization, dealing with folks on a day-in-and-day-out basis with bad behaviors. And so one of the, we prioritized those recommendations that those frontline folks gave us, and the first one, the first priority that came out was really the need for a code of conduct, which we're now calling a standard of behavior. And so we have now created and finalized through the city's leadership team, a standards of behavior for inside city facilities. of behavior for inside city facilities. And so now we're moving on to the standards of behavior for all public facilities, outdoor, you know, sidewalks everywhere, anywhere that's a city-owned property. And so we really feel like that this is important for making sure that we have consistent expectations, really pointed towards kind of our repeat offenders, folks who are consistently exhibiting bad behavior. Certainly, the whole public, we think, will benefit from this, but it's really aimed at providing consistent expectations among all facilities to what facility managers and staff at those facilities expect with regard to behavior. We also want to make sure that we're consistent with how staff interacts with folks when they're having these behaviors or exhibiting these behaviors. So we learned, particularly from the frontline group, that really different facilities were managing problem behaviors in different ways. And so we are wanting to make sure that our facilities are consistent in how we're treating people, and that will include training for staff at all levels to make sure that that intervention is handled consistently. And then we also want to, again, we've created new enforcement consequences and ongoing accountability with regard to those standards of behavior. And then Karen will talk at the end of the presentation about some tools, support, and reinforcement that we need with that. And then my last slide here is just what is needed actually to address these standards. So we have a couple of ordinance changes that we're going to bring to you as a result of our work on the standards of behavior. One is just simply giving the city manager, like many cities have done, the authority to establish rules within city facilities. And so on September 27th, we'll bring that ordinance change back to you, simply giving Harold the authority to set those standards of behavior and, you know, modify those as needed. You know, all sorts of changes in technology, et cetera, sometimes make our need for changing rules, you know, ever-present. And so Harold or the city manager would have the ability to do that. And then now I think Karen's going to go into some of the resources that we've been talking about needing.
Thank you, Sean. So what you will see proposed in the 2017 one-time budget are several requests. The first two bullets really are contracted services for, for one would be, for lack of a better word, campus security to really, this would be someone that would help with kind of patrolling and monitoring what's happening around some of our facilities in the Civic Center area, in Roosevelt Park, in the downtown area, and also in some of our other close-in parks. So Collier is, again, is another park that we had talked about. So someone that really would be able to be out and about, to be able to interact with individuals that might be causing disruption, and also really interacting and helping, because I think basically what we're trying to do is to help link people to service and to resources, and instead of using some of our facilities for services for which they were not designed. So we have one-time dollars for a contract for that. We have one-time dollars for a contract with additional, basically, security within the library itself. We do have a part-time, what we call a customer service assistant, that provides, that really provides that, that service, interacts with customers, really helps to deal with disruptive behavior. That person is only part-time, and basically, our library is open over 65 hours a week, and we need additional reinforcement for that. So we're making that recommendation on a one-time basis, at least in 2017, so that we can continue to evaluate what might we need on an ongoing basis. We don't know right now. Maybe this will be a miracle. So maybe these strategies will work, and what we find is we might not need the level of ongoing resources that we had initially projected. Plus, we're putting, and we have a request for many additional security cameras in both indoors and outdoors in these areas that we identified, to bring in some additional folks for some staff training, you know, so to really help us, and this is really more kind of behavioral and interactive training. So how do you de-escalate conflict, those kinds of things? And we would be bringing in someone to help train our staff to do that. In order for us to be able to enforce these rules of behavior, we do have to have all of these various behaviors posted in our city facilities, so some dollars for signage, a small amount, and then to have additional medical waste containers that are located. We have some right now that are located in some of our facilities, but we need to expand where we have those located.
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. As we're sitting here listening, the thought keeps coming to my mind. I know the answer, but I'm going to ask the question. Why are we having increased problems? I mean, I know the answer, but go ahead and say it.
Well, maybe, Councilman Bagley, maybe you'd like to take a guess. I mean, so certainly, we, that is, that's certainly the question that we get asked a lot. And I don't, I'm not sitting here to say I know the exact answer. I think it's a combination of many different things.
What are those things?
Certainly, those things would be that we are, we are seeing certainly an increase of folks that maybe are homeless for the very first time because of the increase in cost of rental market. We're seeing people that no longer have a place to stay. We are seeing, again, just folks who have been homeless in our community for long periods of time and continuing to struggle with that. We are seeing probably more of what we're calling travelers, so individuals who might not have a long-term connection with the City of Longmont, but are traveling through and for a lot of different reasons, but they really aren't necessarily looking for places to stay. They're really looking for opportunities for supporting, you know, their lifestyle, and aren't necessarily really interested in services, but just a place to, a place to be. So a combination. We are also seeing certainly folks that are continuing to struggle with mental health issues that, again, are not finding adequate support system, folks that are involved in drug use. So those are some of the things that we're just seeing an increase in.
So is it fair to say that as we increase drug use, as we increase things to attract homeless people, as we increase travelers, and do things in our community that we might think were helping, at times, we are certainly seeing unintended consequences? Is that a fair comment?
Oh.
You don't need to answer it. I'm just, I'm just sitting here thinking, a lot of, I'm just sitting here thinking that we're asking for these problems. It's like we're, it's like one eye is like seeing the world just completely this way, and then we talk about the problem over here, and we say, oh, my gosh, there's this problem over here, but I'm just sitting here thinking that it's connected. I mean, I love hope, I love the Hours Center, I love all the things we do, but this, a lot of times, is the result. And I guess, I'm just making the observation, that we're going to be throwing money trying to, you know, manage the problem, but the real question, I think, is, well, what do we do about mental health? Like Chief Butler said, what do we do about the homeless? What do we do about, I just don't, I just think that spending money on these things is necessary, but you said, maybe it'll be a miracle. My point is, I think you're wildly optimistic.
Well, let me, let me clarify my miracle statement. So Mayor Protam, and Mayor and Councilmember. So what I will say, and one of the reasons that you see these requests as one-time requests, because we really do hope that these are not long-term resources that we need. So what I do have hope about is that we do have cross-functional, cross-departmental city staff members that are working on this collaboratively. We have, we are about to engage our providers, our community providers, in this process. So Mayor Protam, what we really are trying to do is to address short-term measures to relieve the pain, right? And to also be, and also be working really hard and thoughtfully and on medium and longer-term interventions, and that is happening throughout our community. Because I think what we all believe is that we want to be thoughtful and try to not create unintended consequences for actions and behaviors to a drill, deal with short-term. So that would be a, thank you for that, allowing me the opportunity to answer that question a little better beyond a miracle.
And I think the other thing that comes into play in this is we all also realize that this is not something that city government can solve. This is something that we, as a community, need to come together and deal with. And so this is very much about what can we do right now as they're working through these other aspects? But it's, this is going to take the community.
And that concludes, no, you did not. We had concluded that, so I would be glad to answer any other questions, or I would be glad to step away from the podium and turn this back over to Jim, which I think that's what I am.
Yeah, I don't see any other questions. Thank you, Karen.
Mayor, Members of Council. So the one-time expenses, again, back on the Attachment C, pages S12 and S13, we only covered a few of them. Were there any questions that you had related to anything else you're seeing on that list? If not, then we're going to move on into the Public Safety Fund.
I think you have one question.
Oh, sorry.
I do have one.
Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you. Jim, I, on the proposed budget in here, and the one I looked at earlier, there was a position for a Sustainability Director, and I didn't see that in your presentation.
Actually, we're going to be covering that, as well as a few other positions that are outside of the General Fund and the Public Safety Fund in a couple more minutes.
Several different things. Okay, thank you.
Right. Thanks for that reminder, though. But first, we're going to review the Public Safety Fund budget. It's 2017, its revenues from this Public Safety Tax are $6.47 million, also has $176,000 of grants and $210,000 of revenue from the firing range operations. The expenditures proposed for 2017 from here are $7.5 million, includes 46.38 FTE. They're all broken down on this slide, I won't read through them, but we are proposing to add two new positions in police, two new police officers in 2017. The budget also includes $202,000 for one-time expenses in police and fire. The firing range operation expenses are $451,000, so they are 46.5% offset by user fee revenues from both other governments as well as the public. There's a $350,000 payment for the lease on Fire Station Number One, and then.
Councilmember Peck, do you have a question?
I do. I'm sorry, Jim, can you go back one slide?
Sure.
At the very bottom, it says graffiti removal. I have seen that in three different places in your budget for graffiti removal. Can you explain why that would be?
So Mayor and Councilmember Peck, our graffiti removal service is actually split across several sources. So part of it is in the Public Safety Fund, like you're seeing. We have another part in the General Fund that is really a share of what you're seeing in the Public Safety Fund. And then in our Parks budget in the General Fund, they also do some graffiti removal as well.
So we're not talking, are we talking about three different people or just three different funds?
Three different funds.
Okay, thank you.
Two funds, actually. Sorry, that's two funds.
The General Fund and the Public Safety Fund. So three different funding sources, though, so. Okay, and then finally, the, in this budget, we have $450,000 that's an expense that is budgeted here or proposed to be budgeted for the Public Safety radio replacement. Talked about that last week, and that we have a large portion of about $2.3 million of that, that is going to be budgeted in the Public Improvement Fund as well. So that is the total cost for this project. The Public Safety Fund share would be loaned from the Fleet Services Fund as well, and paid off over a similar period of time, a little bit longer, I think, than the three years that we're using in the Public Improvement Fund, though, due to a limited ability to make some payments, at least until 2020. So I'll actually pick that up here in this last slide here. So the fund will finish this year with a fund balance of $1.11 million. That includes an 8% emergency reserve of almost $550,000. This proposed budget takes the fund balance down to $960,000. Each of our future budgets is calling to use up to $150,000 of fund balance annually for one-time expenses. And then we have a lease on the Fire Station Number One, which expires in 2020. That will free up, that's paying about $350,000 a year, and so that's going to free up dollars from ongoing revenues for other potential uses, either ongoing or one-time expenses, which we are pretty, we actually have a very small amount of dollars for one-time expenses here, so maybe a good idea to move some of those dollars there then. But in the meantime, we're going to begin to use that to pay off the loan for the radios in 2021. There is a pro forma included in the packet as Attachment D, and that is showing you a multi-year look at this fund and what it will look at like in 2021 and beyond. Begin to restore that fund balance to a greater amount after the lease payment is paid off. Questions on the Public Safety Fund?
Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. So the radios, I understand we need them, but what's the life expectancy of having that expenditure?
10 to 15 years.
10 to 15 years, so.
If that is 10 to 15, I think he must have went like this.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? So then, wanted to move into those other positions, and they are included, I don't have them as a slide, but they are included on, beginning on page S9 of your communication, which is also page 301 of the packet. So we have 8.75 new FTE proposed for 2017 from funds other than the General Fund and the Public Safety Fund, and beginning in, we have half FTE for Administrative Assistant in Public Works and Natural Resources Engineering. We have a FTE for Broadband System Administrator in LPC, and FTE for Customer Service Rep in PWNR Operations, and FTE for Public Works Tech II in PWNR Operations, and an FTE for Operations and Maintenance Tech Lead in PWNR Operations as well, and FTE for a Senior Electric Control System Engineer in Public Works and Natural Resources Operations, a half FTE for a Lab Tech in PWNR Environmental Services, and a full FTE Sustainability Coordinator in PWNR, and a three-quarter FTE Weed Technician in Public Works Natural Resources in the Natural Resources Division. And then finally, we have a one FTE Parts and Service Support Technician in Fleet Services. So we could answer any questions you might have on any of those. I know there was a reference to the Sustainability Coordinator. Okay.
Any other questions?
Well, that's the extent of our presentation tonight. Next week, at your study session, oh, I'm sorry, we do have one more item to update you on before I do that.
So Mayor and Council, I did want to update you on our curbside composting CIP project. We did find an answer for you on that. So in our proposed 2010, or I'm sorry, 2017 to 2021 CIP, we are showing that project as an unfunded project. as an unfunded project. The, the comments that, that are included in the project description do say that the cost for the CIP for '17 may need to be appropriated in '16, and that is exactly what we did. So in June and, first reading in June, second reading in July, the appropriation that we did, this was part of the big carryover one, but these were not carryover dollars. These were new dollars that we identified as such in that appropriation. We appropriated over 1.3 million, 1.032 million dollars for the compost program. And that includes all the carts and the lids, a vehicle, as well as some public outreach. One thing that we are, we do want to follow up with another staff member is, are there any additional costs that were included in this CIP that we didn't appropriate yet this year? And at what point do we need those? So, so we are still going to follow up on that project for you and get you that answer. If, if there are no additional dollars that are needed beyond what we appropriated in 2016, then we will remove that project in its entirety from our CIP.
Okay, great. Thank you for that explanation.
Okay, Mayor, members of council. So next week, we will be covering some priority-based budgeting and how we're using that in the '17 budget, as well as looking ahead with that. And then we will, we'll cover the airport fund. And the rest of the evening, we will be using to cover future challenges and some of the needs that we're unable to fund in this 2017 proposed budget. So we'll be spending time going through, highlighting in a number of different departments what those needs will are, will be and are. So in addition to that, in two weeks, we'll be going through the financial policies and the budget for the, the DDA. We'll be covering some street fund issues that need to be brought back to your attention, like the Wright Free Longmont program. And then we'll have our first public hearing on the budget. And then on October 4th, our second public hearing before the ordinances are prepared. And then we'll be looking for final direction from you on October 4th. So with that, I just wanted to remind you, if there's something that you're hoping to hear about that you haven't yet heard about, or I had, I didn't just mention on what we will be bringing to you in the next two weeks, please let us know, and we can try to schedule that in. But otherwise, that's the extent of our plans for presenting on the '17 budget.
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Always, simple request. So I've got a hard copy budget. As we add to it, the little supplements, if someone could just get me hard copies or email them to me, and I'll have my, I'll have someone print them out for me.
Not a problem.
That'd be great. Thanks. Yeah, yeah, I don't, yeah.
We'll get them to you.
Someone needs to print them out for me. And so no one else.
Oh, you just said you'd have someone else print.
Yes, but it needs to go towards, yes, CC my office staff. Yeah. That's all.
Okay.
Don't you guys have staff?
Well, I guess now is time for final call. Public invited to be heard. Does anybody from the public like to come down and speak at this time?
Yes, council, here, member, councilpeople, who I am, Bo Schaefer, I'm here just to remind you of a couple little things. One, if any of you need a copy of the Constitution, I have many of them. I would be pleased to let you have one. And second of all, I'd like to remind you of a favorite saying of mine by one of my favorite founding fathers, Benjamin Franklin, the only president of the United States who never was president of the United States. It's on my shirt, and it says, "Whoever can give up essential liberties for a little temporary safety deserves neither liberty nor safety." And so I would ask that you consider that in your considerations. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else coming down? Paul?
Hi, kids. So I'm going to ask that, I've had discussions with staff members about the kind of research that went into the ordinance that you're suggesting. And you might do some of that research yourself, but we do have, Jonathan Singer couldn't make it tonight because it's his birthday, and they were having a karaoke contest over in Boulder. I was invited to, and I thought I'd rather speak here than sing there. And so take a look at, at the laws that, that were passed. And between what had happened in Denver and the other towns that staff looked at, they somehow failed to actually look at the law. And I, and I did forward that to a lot of people, and it's a very simple read. And I'm only here to talk about, we're going to ban something that, I mean, if we can, you can extract essential oils from mint leaves, then why not marijuana leaves? This is something that people are doing in their own home, and it is legal in, and the state's passed a law making it legal, exempted that. I'd also like to say something about some wonderful things that have happened, which are sort of like, so the Greenway is beautiful, and there's this spot along the Greenway that I'm not going to talk about. I might tell you, there's a spot on the Greenway that I had feared would never be restored. And I'm talking along the river, and it's more beautiful than ever. And I'm not going to talk about where it is because I'm afraid it's going to be overrun. It's just gorgeous, and I'm enjoying it, me and my dogs, and it's beautiful. And I thank the Parks Department for the work that's gone into it, especially this new hire, this gentleman here. He's a great guy. And, and he hasn't arrested me yet for trespassing in open space because we don't have that rule in the city. We use our open space. It belongs to the people. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Does anybody else like to speak? All right, I guess this ends, final call, public invited to be heard. City manager, do you have any comments?
No comments, Mayor, council.
Well, I guess I put you ahead of us. Now it's time for Mayor and council comments.
Good to know that you're thinking in the right direction. Good direction.
Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I, I missed the meeting where council took up the resolution to urge a yes vote for the science and cultural facilities district funding reauthorization. And I would like to ask the council's permission to have that brought back so that we could vote on that in, by itself, as a resolution at our next meeting.
I guess I'm, I'm fine with that since you missed the following meeting at the, and missed the.
It's a motion, yes.
Okay.
Oh, we aren't doing motions. So it's a res, it's just.
It's a request.
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 A request to bring it back.
Or you can give us a heads up that we're going to make, you're going to make a motion next week.
Well, I'd like us to get it done before actually we get our ballots.
Yeah. It's time.
Just saying.
Does anybody?
Is anyone opposed to that?
No. I mean, I think we would have passed it had it been separated as a separate item to begin with, you know.
So is that clear to staff? Thank you.
I guess along that same lines, I'm going to jump in now. I was on the task force that was, worked on the school bond issue, went to several meetings, got myself educated on how those bonds are going to be used and what the benefit to St. Brain and the, and also the benefit to the City of Longmont. So I would like to see if it's okay with council, if you agree with me to bring back a resolution for the September 27th meeting in support of the school bond fund. Is everybody okay with that? Okay. Thanks.
Councilmember Christensen.
I thought we weren't going to do this. Okay, anyway, I would like to let everybody know that the Our Center Open House is happening tomorrow at 4:30 to 6:00 p.m. over at the Our Center. And it's a great new building, and I would like to thank the people from Home Depot and Excel and various other companies who have programs for their people to volunteer. And those people have in turn solicited the rest of us to volunteer. So about 21 of us went down last Saturday and monkeyed around down at the Our Center and shelved their market and cleaned up the outside, and that was a lot of fun. It works so much easier when you've got a lot of people. And thanks for everybody who showed up.
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I guess that, we had, we heard a lot of talk tonight about the, the marijuana ordinance. So question first, when is that coming up? The 27th? Okay. And I guess the, just general thoughts, when I read it, I knew, I, this doesn't surprise me. And I talked with, just this one seventh, my opinion. I would have reservations, even the inference that we might allow government officials, police officers, et cetera, to go into someone's home without a warrant, meaning they didn't get probable cause. I understand that when you read it, Eugene, it does look like, I mean, it, it does clearly state that they go there, and if they refuse, they can go get a warrant. But I think, I, I think that even the impression that they can go there and there's some type of expectation that they can go into someone's home, that chafes me a great deal. The other question I have is, I think the goal we're trying to accomplish is making sure there's no, like, commercial grows going on in people's homes. Like just lots and lots of plants to the point where it's impeding through odor, traffic, or whatever, their neighbors. So my question would be, what was the, the questions for next time, not now, would be things like, first, where did the six-plant rule come, where did the six-plant proposal come from? How many plants are necessary for someone who requires medical marijuana usage? I'd want to know, you know, I don't know how mu, I mean, I've smelled a pot grow, a big one. I've never smelled six plants, you know? So the other question I'd have is, is there a way to measure odor, you know, instead of plant number, maybe just odor? Because I mean, I'm not going to, I don't care if my neighbor has an entire basement full of pot plants, because it's a house, and it's going to be away from me. But if you're living in an apartment, and I guess there's, I guess what I'm saying is that there's all these issues that I can totally hear what people are saying that I think we need to address before we go to first reading. And so just my two cents on the issue.
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. The other, the other point I would like to make on the same subject is that I think it would be helpful if we had something from drug enforcement as to why this was considered an issue to begin with. Have they been having a lot of complaints and calls, et cetera? So that doesn't look just like council decided all on its own to, I don't know, to regulate it. That there was a reason for this to begin with.
Well, I, I could be wrong, but I thought, you know, one of the reasons was complaints from odors. And I don't know, if you had 12 plants in a basement, does that cause an odor? Does 18 plants cause an odor? Well, I think there's two problems. There's the odor problem, and then when these big, huge commercial grows are done in house, they're starting to blow up transformers. I mean, it's, it's an electrical problem and a safety problem. I mean, that's one problem. So, but, you know, I, I was enlightened by the testimony given tonight, you know, this one lady in the wheelchair that talked about, you know, how many, you know, that it's, it's a medicine for her. And I don't know, does it take 12 plants to medicate yourself, or does it take 18? Does it take six? I don't know. I mean, those are the things, I don't know. And then the, the other thing is, what if you had two people in a household that both were medical marijuana users? You know, that's another issue, too, so. You know, I thought we were on the right track last week, but I guess I want to rethink a few things.
Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Well, it's always good to get more information. And to that end, I really think that we really, we ought to seriously consider where the state law lands, so we don't have to reinvent a whole nother set of regulations that are not understandable and hard to follow. There are things that have come up, like I was saying last week about using alcohol to extract essential oils from botanicals. I mean, if we say no on marijuana, do we say no to everything else? How do we regulate that? Are we, are we going to say it's okay to use butane on spearmint, but not on marijuana? I mean, we have, I think we have, when we tried to get away too far on our own, our deluge gets kind of messy. And I, so I would, I would suggest that we really implement a lot of what the state law says, so we don't have to reinvent the wheel, and it makes it easier to enforce at all levels, so.
Councilmember Christensen.
I, I agree with what councilpeople Bagley and Peck and Moore have all said. I think that there's no pressing need to have this come back on the 27th. I think we really need to take a little bit more time and talk to people who have chronic conditions, like the vet who came and the other people who have chronic medical conditions and see actually what is necessary for medical marijuana. And I think that we need to talk to Representatives Foot and Singer, who have more extensive experience with this on a statewide basis. And, you know, the whole point of this is to create less problems and greater safety. And I think we're kind of stuck in the weeds a little bit. I, you know, I just think we need to take our time with this. Thanks.
Yeah. Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you. Also, I think it would be really good to talk to the owners of the two shops that we have on the outskirts of town, because they deal with the, the state laws all the time. They would probably know them a lot better than we do.
Okay, now, city manager, any remarks?
No comments, Mayor, council.
City, county, any remarks?
No comments, Mayor.
All right, this meeting is adjourned.